meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. Seeing none. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March twenty eighth, twenty twenty five signing of Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty twenty five extending certain COVID- nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law is Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, until June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number one five zero eight nine four five four four one zero, conference ID two zero three three eight six four nine one pound, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel one zero seven two, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First order of business is to establish a quorum. Ms. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Dykens?
Present.
Mr. Matters?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
And the Chair is present. So we have a fairly long agenda tonight, but we will begin with the approval of three sets of minutes. The first set of minutes are from October, I'm sorry, August nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a couple of corrections on page seven. Second full paragraph, second to last line, at the beginning where it says the subsidizing agency, I think it should read the sponsoring agency. I didn't check the video. And then in the next paragraph, the sixth line, I'm sorry, the fifth line, comments are not binding
Correct.
on the COA. I think the word not is missing right in the middle. That's what I had.
It's critical.
You see that, Kathy? Okay. And then on page ten. Second full paragraph, fourth line, where it says the position of the chair, I should, I think we'd want to insert the ZBA chair. I think that's what he was referring to. And then finally on, it's the fourth paragraph from the bottom where it says the board reiterated the process that got these projects to this point. I would strike the word board and just say some board members reiterated the process. That's what I have. Any other corrections? Okay, seeing none, I'll call a vote. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, five to zero. So approved. Next are the minutes of September sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
Move the minutes?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any corrections? I have one.
Yes.
I had one. Yes, I do. Very last paragraph on page twelve. There was discussion about collaborating with the Chatham Barzine to expand the sidewalk. I would insert onshore road at the end of that sentence. Jeff, you had one?
Yeah, we just need a vote on page fourteen. It's minor on a German. Need votes.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, none, no others. So I'll call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. The final set is the minutes of September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any corrections? I have three. Page six, at the bottom, second to last line after the word overlay, I would insert at the upcoming budget summit. See that, Kathy? Page six, second to last line, overlay after, insert at the upcoming budget summit. Page Second full paragraph, concerns are expressed about the letter from Attorney Ford. I would put in parentheses, a similar letter was received from Attorney Kanaga, close parenthesis. And then on page thirteen. Up at the top, where my name is listed and Mr. Matters seconded, and there's a roll call, I think we should just clarify what that was. After the word, phrase roll call, I would insert to specify the term of appointment of Ms. Smith. There were two votes taken. Any other corrections? Okay, you had that too.
I had that.
All right, hearing none, I'll ask for a call to roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Next, we have public announcements and agenda item requests. The Chair has two. The first is related to the vacancy on the Assembly of Delegates position as a result of the resignation of Randy Potash. And today was the deadline for applications. Today at noon, we have three applicants, and we have a short window. We have to get the appointment made, interviews conducted, the appointment made, and the certification letter to the Assembly by, I think, the twenty-third of September. So I would just, this is just a scheduling matter, so it's okay within the open meeting law. I would just ask the board, what is your pleasure about scheduling an interview session and a vote? Did you want to do it? The next available board meeting is the, what, the eighteenth?
Well, you have the budget summit on the twenty-first.
So it's too late. That would be too late. So the question is whether we would want to, my suggestion would be to consider, so that everybody could attend, maybe on an early morning meeting, we'd interview the three candidates and vote.
On what date again?
Whatever, whatever you'd like to do.
Okay, on what date did you say? The eight?
Well, we have to have this by the twenty-third, right?
The twenty-third is the twenty-one day deadline per the Cape Cod Commission's, or the Assembly's charter. So it would have to be prior to that date. That's the day we must notify them of your selection.
Yeah, we have to get it. We can email them a certificate. So what is, what are your thoughts about when you'd like to meet and do this?
I have to do it before the twenty-first.
Okay.
And the morning, the morning of the twentieth is?
Twentieth would be good.
Yeah.
What day of the week is that?
It's Monday.
Let me just check my... Yeah, that looks good for me. Corey, does that work for you?
Appears so, yeah.
Stuart?
That should work.
What time would you like to do it?
Um.
Get up early.
Jill would, I mean, not Jill, Serena would do it at four.
I would. I'd do it at four.
I would, but I wouldn't do that to other people, so.
I am. It am.
Eight o'clock is fine with me. Okay with Corey? Stuart? It's okay. So we will have a meeting of the Select Board to both interview and make the appointment on October twentieth, eight o'clock in the morning. We'll do that wherever we can, probably at the town offices. It will be a public session. The second announcement has to do with the Center for Act of Living Project. In light of the discussion last week when we had an update on the progress of the design work and considering the challenges facing the town with respect to the design work and pricing, I've been engaged with the Town Manager and the Chair of the Council on Aging Board in discussing how to proceed. And we've had some input as well from Select Board member Smith with suggestions. And with that in mind, the Town Manager will be appointing a working group to interface and interact with the project team, which includes the, the project manager for the town and the design, and the design consultant as well as staff. And I'm going to turn to Jill to announce that this will be known as the CFAL Building Working Group. So Jill?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So in speaking with you, putting together the working group of five members that I think that would work great with the project team to give us input and guidance. And I'm looking at the Chair of the COA Board, the Chair of the Friends Group as well, a member of the, of, a member representing the general contractor or a builder, and, oh, of course, Stuart Smith to serve as the Select Board representative. And then I have one, one more representative. I'm, I'm looking to seek concurrence. This would be held in compliance with the open meeting law. It would be posted. And we're looking to have a first meeting early next week, certainly have a date by tomorrow or Thursday so that we can post the meeting. So again, it's a, it's not necessarily a Town Manager's Working Group. It's a CFAL Building Working Group to hopefully get us to where we know, where we need to go and in time for it to, a bid could be issued that reflects the appropriate design.
Thank you. And it's important to get it in place, and the Town Manager has the authority to appoint, appoint the group. So, and I appreciate Mr. Smith's willingness to serve on this. I think that's important. I will continue to be, in the liaison to the Council on Aging Board. I will obviously continue to monitor this at the regular meetings of the Council on Aging Board. Any other announcements or agenda item requests? Mr. Dykens?
I have two, Mr. Chairman. The eighty-eight, the Committee for Individuals with Disabilities has asked to reduce their membership from seven to five, and they took a vote at the last meeting. So they'd like to get that on our agenda and seek our approval. Difficulty getting quorum, et cetera. So anyway. And then we have a beautification committee meeting at K-Cole Park tomorrow morning, I believe at eight, it's eight or nine. I gotta take a look. But the beautif, yeah, the beautif, thank you. The beautification committee will want some time going forward. You're likely to get a request from either Angela or me or, but in the near future, they want to get in front of us with their plans for kind of the front third of K-Cole Park and vet it with us to see what their thoughts are. It's pretty exciting, and I think everybody will look forward to that. So anyway, it's coming. I don't have a date to ask for, but they want to get on the agenda.
Sure. The first item we can probably take care of at our very next business meeting. Sounds straightforward. Any other, any other announcements or agenda requests from the Board? Any from the public? Yes, Jackie?
You're telling the boss.
Yes, you have to come to the podium. And please identify yourself, although we all know you.
Hello, everyone. Jackie Zibrat Long, Monomoy Regional School Committee, also resident of the Town of Chatham. And I am also here as a liaison for the school committee to the Chatham Select Board. So thank you. I just wanted to let the community know, as well as the Select Board, that we are working with a, our school committee to hire a new superintendent this year, as this will be Dr. Carpenter's last year with us. So there's certainly large shoes to fill. We have hired a, a firm through MASK to help us with this. And we will have many community forums, which is mainly why I'm here tonight, to make sure the community knows that there will be an opportunity for them to come, listen, ask questions, and learn more about the process and be part of that discussion and decision as it directly impacts all of us. We have a lot coming forward for the school committee and for the district in the coming years. So it'll be really important who fills this position going forward. There is a survey online currently, which closes on October twentieth. And that online survey basically gives staff, students, alumni, families, community members an opportunity to share what the qualities they feel the next superintendent should possess. That will close on October twentieth. You can find it on the Monomoy Regional School website. The first community forum will actually be this Thursday, October sixteenth. There are three parts to the forum. One will be during our kids' jossam hour at the high school, and that will be for students who will be able to participate in the forum. And again, this is run by MASK. There will be a second one, which will be for our staff, and that's three thirty to five at the Monomoy Regional High Library. And then the most important one will be five thirty to seven o'clock, and that will be at the Monomoy Regional Middle School Auditorium. And that will be the opportunity for all other community members or anyone who wants to repeat, maybe students or staff want to go to that one as well. And that will be a forum open and run by MASK for anyone to contribute and ask questions at that time. Future community forums will be announced, will roll out after that, and they'll be publicized on our website. And I will do my best to either be here or let the Select Board know, to let the community know when and if they can participate. There are als, there's also an online application for the screening committee. So if anyone is interested in being on the screening committee, you still have an opportunity to go online on our website and apply, and some will be in contact with you for the application. And I believe that is about it for now. Our timeline is pretty tight, just so that we can be as competitive as possible. So it's looking like December eighteenth as of right now is when we will vote to appoint the superintendent. So it'll be really important to have attendance from community members as much as possible from here on out. And that's all I have. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Yeah, any questions? So thank you very much for coming with that. Thank you for your service and to your colleagues
Thank you.
for the Town of Chatham on the school committee. Any other public announcements or agenda? Yes, sir. You have to come to the podium and identify yourself.
Hi. My name is Chris Ray. I live in North Chatham, even though I don't sound like I live in North Chatham. It's very timely that you're clearing the minutes from the nineteenth of August, because this is about the residential tax exemption. You guys have been clearly mulling this for quite a long time, which is great. And I now feel like someone who's joined a conversation late in the party and is trying to catch up. I'd like the Select Board to consider an agenda item for a future meeting that will allow the Board to present the issues that led to the RTE proposal. And to set out why the next steps are what they are. This is especially important because I see the Board has changed its position recently. So that, I think that's, you know, what's been accepted by you guys for a while is now, you know, changed. So the people that I've talked to, because when I read this, I talked to as many people as I could locally to understand the detail, the people I've talked to are keen to understand the detail on the population, the detail on the population that the Board is trying to help. The general assumption seems to be that it's a combination of working people trying to rent or own a property in Chatham on the wage levels that local businesses can offer. And longer-term residents and retirees who are struggling to stay here. There may be more than that. That's just my guess. There are hard numbers associated with this sort of analysis, local income levels, balance between rented, owned accommodation for working people in Chatham, and differentiating between struggling and self-sufficient retirees. Most of all, it's important to quantify the numbers of the people that are involved and the degree of difficulty they're experiencing, and therefore how much money is needed to provide relief. At that point, the analysis shifts to who is best placed to provide the funds and through what sort of schemes they could be encouraged to contribute. Perhaps with the long history of discussions about the residential tax exemption, this sort of analysis has been done and filed, but it seems that it needs to be dusted off and refreshed in order to carry the population, many of whom may not be voters, but who will nevertheless carry the burden. This might also serve to head off the prospect of legal action, which I know the Chair is concerned about. I have heard the arguments for and against the RTE, and I find myself constantly asking why I'm only talking about this one scheme. There are page loads of support schemes in the Massachusetts General Law and elsewhere, some of which come with funding from outside the town. So the final stage of discovery, if you will, for those who haven't been involved in the annual debate, is for the most promising available schemes to be measured up against the need and scored, and winners recommended and voted on. Or indeed-
Mr. Ray, I just wanted to interrupt because we can't have argument pro or con during this portion of the meeting. This is really an opportunity for you to request an agenda item, and you've indicated what you'd like and that you're looking for an analysis to be placed on the agenda. But I'm trying to keep you this side of making an argument pro or con for the, for the item.
I'm with you all the way. If you're happy with what I've said so far, then that's-
As long as we understand what you're looking for, which is an agenda item to discuss the residential tax exemption in terms of what analysis the town has made or will make about it and the steps that led up to it, that's what I understand your request is. Is that-
Yes.
Fair summary?
Yes, a fair summary.
Okay. Okay. And if you have something else to add on those, in that regard, that's fine. If you want to make an argument pro or con, I can't allow that during this portion of the meeting. That's under our rule.
In any case, all I've got to say is thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any others? Okay. So the next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider a new entertainment, annual entertainment license for the Chatham Orpheum Theater at six thirty-seven Main Street in Chatham. And I think we have, Town Clerk will read the announcement, read the notice.
Town of Chatham Select Board Public Hearing Notice. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at five PM in the large meeting room at the Town Hall Annex, two sixty-one George Ryder Road, to consider a request for a new annual entertainment license for indoor concerts, live bands, and public shows, including amplified live music for the Chatham Orpheum Theater at six thirty-seven Main Street, Chatham, Mass. All interested parties are encouraged to participate in person, remotely, or via the link on the posted agenda.
Thank you. So we'll open the public hearing, and Kevin McLean from the Orpheum will present the application for us.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Kevin McLean, the Executive Director of the Chatham Orpheum Theater. In anticipation of our two thousand twenty-sixth, one hundred and ten-year anniversary, being in downtown Chatham, we would like to bring live music to our community. We are working with partnering with the Cape Cod Symphony to bring a, to be the winter residence of the Cape Cod Symphony Presents programming. It would be a series of five concerts over the course of five months. These concerts would be anywhere between three and five people, jazz quartets, small symphony concerts. We are trying to get one for December for the holidays, a swingin' Christmas. So these would be small, like I said, three, five, you know, sized bands, quartets in the, in the main theater. They would not be outside. They would be in this, in the main theater. And we would like to do a series of those throughout the year, in addition to also doing, being able to bring in the Chatham Corral or the Chatham Band, things of that nature. Basically adding live entertainment. We're trying to expand the arts in Chatham even more than we already do. And this is a way, I think, of celebrating our one hundred and ten-year anniversary, and we hope that the Select Board allows us to get a year-round entertainment license so we can do this.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Board? Mr. Matters?
No, I have no issue with this at all. I think it would be a good benefit for the community. But just for, I guess, my own two cents worth is traditionally when some of these entertainment licenses come up for review, the complaint or the concern is always the noise. But in the theater, by design, these rooms have like almost a muffling of amplification, so this noise doesn't really escape the room. It is designed to kind of keep that noise in.
Yes, this would be-
This is, this is beyond ideal for these kind of settings.
Yeah, absolutely. It's perfectly designed for that. We are bringing in, we bought a stage, a small stage, and in the main theater, and it is designed to be loud in that theater. As anybody who has seen Top Gun has, can attest to, it will nowhere be nearly as loud as that. So, so yeah, not an issue with neighbors, not an issue with sound at all.
Right, thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Dykens?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. It's a perfect venue. We'd love to have more arts and, you know, music, music here in Chatham, and I just think it's a great idea, and I move approval.
I'll second.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Smith? Did you, no. Any from the public? This is a public hearing? Okay, seeing none. I think it's a fabulous idea. Before my time, I guess historically, there was live entertainment at the Chatham Orpheum Theater.
Yes, for a few years in the late eighties, Mr. Rudnick had a number of excellent bands come through there. So I don't think we're going to bring back blood, sweat, and tears, but I think we'll start with the symphony and we'll work our way out. How about that?
I saw Ray Charles.
Yeah, Ray Charles. Yes, that was definitely, yep. Yeah, a lot of good acts, actually.
I think it's a fabulous idea. I'm really thrilled that you're partnering with the Cape Symphony. That's a great-
We are very excited.
Institution. So there's a motion on the table. It's been seconded. I will call the roll to approve this. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Enthusiastically aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Congratulations. Good luck with this.
Thank you. We hope to see you all at the Orpheum soon.
Thank you. Next item is public comments on the business agenda. Under our rules, we allow contemporaneous public comment, but if anyone wishes to speak now because they might not be here later on, they're entitled to do so. Seeing none, we'll proceed now with the next item, which is the update from our Director of Public Works on the Chatham Wells PFAS and drinking water testing and the pumping update for September 2025. Welcome, Mr. Philly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rob Failey, Director of Public Works, here to give you your September water report. So for the month of, oh, I'm sorry, I put the month of October on there, so I apologize for that, but it is the month of September. Chatham's wells have been pumping seven to 14 hours per day. The water tanks did hit the low-level alarm two times during the month. Again, with our watering restrictions, they both fell on a Wednesday and a Friday. So it was pretty consistent with what we've been seeing. I'll skip through to the pictures. Training Field Wells 5 and 8, the permanent treatment facility, architectural work continues. Windows and doors have been partially completed. Painting in some areas has begun. You see the process piping here on the green sand filters is well underway. We're working on system ply and return piping on the GAC filters and the HVAC work is ongoing and we're about to begin electrical work. So things are moving along very nicely. So for the, this is for you, Mr. Dykens. Wells 10 and 11, we have received design conservation restriction back from the Environmental Affairs Office. We filed it with the Registry of Deeds. Now we're just coordinating with DEP on the flushing and testing protocol to introduce well-tanned water into Chatham's water system. So that, hopefully that chapter will be closed soon. Irrigation meters. This has been a very busy month at DPW. As you know, August 22nd, we sent out 635 letters to residents who were in violation of the irrigation system rules. 144 had already paid and 491 had not. Since then, we sold over 50,000 in irrigation meters. That's over 250 irrigation meters. 173 meters have been installed. So now we have over 1,000 operable meters in Chatham, which is, you know, we're working in the right direction. We also verified that 37 properties who have previously registered are now in a well. We weren't aware that they're in a well, but we do now. And there are 17 additional properties that have come forward that have registered irrigation now. When water bills go out this month, 153 properties will be billed the higher 80/20 split. As of October 6th, the writing of this report, 148 properties have not paid for a second meter. And at week's end, we just compiled those today for the mail. They are getting $300 a day fines. I believe, I think the total is around 144 or so. DPW worked with the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee to identify extenuating circumstances for properties who may be temporarily exempt from fines. And some of those exemptions are, you know, plumbers are scheduled, but they're still beyond the 90-day window. The owner is drilling a well, but the well drillers beyond the 90-day window. There are transfers of ownership and we're just trying to get the property owner nailed down. We've identified about a dozen curb stops that when they went to shut the water off, they were damaged. So we've been repairing those. Houses are under construction or completely razed and their water is cut and capped. So they get a waiver for now. And the irrigation is already on a well, but the inspection, so we can see if the backflow device has been removed, has been delayed because our folks are straight out with inspecting installations and all that. We also have corresponding documentation required for each situation. So it's not just, so we try to be consistent. We brought this before the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. They were in agreement with, with kind of the step forward. And any circumstances that we haven't listed here, we'll go back in front of the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. And I also want to compliment administrative staff publicly at DPW who have been handling a substantial workload from these irrigation regulations and meter purchases, fines, et cetera. It's been a lot, a lot of work and a lot to track. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge them. Back to the report, water sampling. Things are moving along. Station maintenance, EDR is our SCADA consultant. They've been onsite doing some upgrade work. Again, our daily double appointments for second meter installs, we've doubled up all the appointments. So they, they go to one part of town, talk to the plumber, get things going. They jump to another appointment on the other side of town, fix that. And so they're bouncing around. They're, they're very busy.
Rob, you have unregistered irrigation inspections listed. Can you just touch on that under system maintenance?
So they are, they are looking at basically ground-truthing some of the information that we have. We don't have it all, you know, we have partial information, but we're, we're asking Violi employees to go out and let us know, do they have irrigation systems installed? They're looking for backflow devices. They're, they're just double-checking things in the ground.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So this is, sorry about the formatting. It's coming off the bottom of the page. But this is the September monthly comparison. You can see September 2024 versus 2025. Apologize for the bottom of the page being cut off, but in your, in your packet, it does show about 4 million gallons. We are lower this past month than we were a year ago. So that's about six and a half percent. Here's that same information in a, in a form, in a bar chart form. Again, 2025 is the hot pink. You can see almost every day we are below what we were last year and that's making up that 4 million gallon difference. Again, here it is in a, in a bar chart form as well. You can see the red is much lower than the blue, pretty consistently. And here's the monthly pumping report, shows the level of effort for each well. Our minimum day was 1.2 million gallons. Our maximum day was 2.8 million gallons with an average of 1.8 million gallons. And here's the level of effort in a bar chart. And here's the year-to-date pumping report. Again, we've been pretty consistent a good part of the summer. This last month, we are four million gallons less than that month the year before. Our total is about 14 million gallons less than last year. So it's a good sign, but it's, you think with the, with the drought and the irrigation restrictions, it would have been more. But we'll take what we can get at this point. It's, it's still less. And then here's the bar chart showing the year-to-date. Expect that bar all the way to the right to increase soon as well 10 begins to pump into the system. I don't have an exact date on that yet, but we are working towards it. And here is the un-metered water usage. We still are flushing and blowing off as, as we are replacing some of these curb stops and, and things, we just have to flush a little bit more frequently just to prevent dirty water calls and complaints. And here's the five-year pumping comparison for the month of September. You can see for gallonage, we're a little on the high side, a little higher than average. But for pumping hours, we're not doing too bad. So nothing else to report there unless you have any questions. And here's the, here's the not-good news. So our seasonal decline in the observation wells continues. I know we just had three days of steady rain and it's not enough to really make a dent on here yet. I checked the graph today and it's just, you know, it really looks the same as it does today. I'm sure it helped, but it takes a lot of water to come out of a nine-month deficit. So, you know, we need more weather patterns like that to help us. But we are at the lowest. I went back another 10 years beyond this. We're still at the lowest that we have seen. So it's a, it is kind of a stark reminder that we are in a drought. This is Brewster's Well. Very similar pattern. We are lower than we have seen before. The Massachusetts Drought Task Force met on October 8th to review the conditions. I don't have an updated map because it wasn't available yet. And what they recommended was some areas of Massachusetts are improving. The Cape will remain at a Level 2. That's what the recommendation was, which is good news. I know Nantucket went to a Level 3. They were at a Level 2 last month. And Martha's Vineyard was at a Level 0 last month and they're now at a Level 1. So conditions are worsening out here, Cape Cod and the Islands region. Again, the rain we just saw is going to help significantly, but we have yet to see how much that graph changes. Does it really help us start to climb out to that seasonal recharge or is it a little blip and we continue to decline? You know, only time will tell. And that's all I had for you, unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Smith?
Hi, Rob. Not to be a gloom and doomer, but what happens when things really go bad was as far as lack of water? I'm trying to, I don't really see the graph up there, but to a level that below what we have now.
So, I mean, luckily in the fall, you know, everybody's shutting off the irrigation systems. The ground is recharging. It all depends on how much we recharge, how much we rebound. We need that crest to peak as high as it can. As you see, the last couple of years, that trough is kind of almost creeping lower and lower, you know? And it's harder and harder to rebound fully. So, you know, this is probably looking at somewhat of a long-term drought, but you really, you know, you can't predict it until you see what the recharge rates are, what the snowfall and the rainfall we get over the winter season are.
So it's not really a plan that I'm not aware of.
It's kind of a wait-and-see and, you know, by spring, we'll, we'll know a lot more before we start a seasonal decline again. And then we can react and put restrictions in place even further if we need to.
Your, the training field building is looking quite nice. It's kind of, you know, if you have to have an industrial building, that's a nice-looking industrial building. One, one comment just based on history before you. Do you, maybe for your next update, do you have a rendition of the sign that's going to be placed out there, if any?
I don't believe there is a sign going to be placed there, but I will-
Even better.
Check on that.
Well, even better. If there's no sign, that's perfect. But, okay, thank you.
I just would add, Stuart, that we have, on the recommendation of the Water and Sewer Committee, we do have this matrix that they put together for us to consider what levels of restrictions we might want to put in place. Of course, it's largely relevant to the summertime, but, but it's a guide for us. Jeff, I think you have?
Just a quick question and a couple of comments. I mean, a comment is good job on the irrigation meter update. I mean, it seems like a lot of forward progress there and I was pleased that you thanked your staff. I think it's really important to give them positive feedback and some positive reinforcement. They've got to really be scurrying in terms of administrative work and follow-up work and stuff. So I appreciate that. And I just had a quick question on the treatment plant itself. When do you think that's going to be started up? What's your projection of?
Prior to next summer. It's got to spring completion and things are on schedule, so, so we're hopeful.
In terms of that graph, I remind everybody, we don't get snow anymore. So, so what we really need is, you know, a whole bunch of snowstorms, nor'easter snowstorms. And I mean, we just, we haven't got any for years, seems to me. In terms of signage, we, there is a sign, if you go down to the, to the 10 and 11 area and then the, the treatment plant down off Morton Road, you'll see a sign that's typical that they put out, you know, this is the treatment plant, they're done by the town of Chatham, blah, blah, blah. So you'll see that.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, wouldn't worry about the political overtones there, too much.
Oh, I, I wasn't even looking at that sign. I was looking at the sign that was put up on the South Chatham was completely unnecessary. And fortunately, it was moved back, so people didn't have to see it as much. But I would encourage either no sign or something considerably smaller.
Was that on the road? South Chatham Wells or?
No, the treatment plant, similar to the one you're building on Training Field. Yeah, that sign.
The Iron and Manganese Plant, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The one on Morton Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty industrial-looking.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from the board? Any from the public?
Pray for rain.
Don't see any. Okay. Thank you, Rob. We'll go on to our business agenda. There are a number of items, I think, seven. The first is, I won't read them all at the same time because we will allow contemporaneous comment. The first is to consider special one-day alcohol permit for the Monomoy Community Services Witches Walk on October 25th, 2025 at 524 Main Street, Chatham. And Teresa Malone, are you online? Is that you, TM?
I am.
Teresa, you want to present this to us, please?
Sure.
Welcome.
Hello. Well, nice to be here. We have, we're doing our annual witches' walk. We have six locations this year that are participating downtown. The only one that requires a permitting from the town this year is the Cookware. Rebecca has held the event at least five or six years in a row, so she's familiar with how we're going to lay it out. Same thing as usual. It'd be one location within the Cookware where you can receive a drink. There's food served as well and activities and games and raffles and things going on in that space as well. No alcohol to be carried in or out. Trying to think what else is usually on your list of questions. We have 180 people signed up. It's sold out in a couple of minutes this year, so we realize people still want to do witches' walk, hoping for good weather.
Thank you. Kathy, the reason, I guess, this has to be a separate agenda item and not on the consent agenda is because it's an alcohol permit?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments to Teresa? Any from the public? I don't hear any. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. I will call a roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Good luck, Teresa.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is discussion with the Monomoy Regional School District on the regional agreement. This is an agenda item that was requested by Superintendent Scott Carpenter. And we'll ask the superintendent, Dr. Carpenter, would you please come forward? I know we have one of the members of the school committee present, Jackie Seabrett Long, and also the business manager, Mr. McMillan, is here as well.
So I know that, that you had distributed to you a letter that the school committee had received from-
Yes, I should point out, yes, I did receive a letter. We did receive a letter from the chair of the school committee relative to this presentation. And we received, she forwarded a copy of a letter that was sent to the school committee with the response from the school committee to the Harwich Select Board where they requested that the, the school committee consider opening the regional agreement for possible amendment.
Right. So, you know, so I'll just, I'll try to make this short and brief because it was a short and brief presentation in Harwich. In July of 2025, the Harwich Select Board had sent the school committee a letter asking the school committee to, to open or to, you know, to review the regional agreement. And I think there was a lot of confusion going back and forth in terms of what does opening the agreement look like or what does, what does amending the regional agreement look like? So, so the chair of the school committee and I went to the Harwich Select Board to give a very short, really just three-slide presentation on what the process is. So this is that presentation I had, as I was driving to that presentation, I had called and left a message with Jill and just said, hey, you know, you know, every time we do something in Harwich, we want to make sure we're extending the same invitation to do a similar presentation in Chatham. So, so this is that presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm happy to answer any questions afterwards. You know, so the regional agreement reads that, that at least every five years, the committee will undertake a review of the terms of the regional agreement. And we last did this in, in 2021, and we went before, before town meetings back then. The, the language on what is involved in amending the agreement is pretty short and sweet. It, it says that amendments to the agreement may be initiated by one of two things. A three-quarters vote with no fewer than 4.5 votes of the regional school committee, or a signed petition, signed by 10% of the membership of the voters of our towns. And that such amendments then have to go to both town meetings. And it's not, it's not a special town meeting. It specifically states that it has to go to an annual town meeting. And it would have to be, you know, it would have to pass by majority vote at both annual town meetings, not one annual town meeting and not, you know, but, and the other one not approve it. And then lastly, whatever changes are even approved at the, you know, in the regional agreement, have to go to the Commissioner of Education to be approved. So, you know, so if we were going through such a process, we would want to be front-loading, you know, any sort of suggestions or any sort of amendments that are going to be made with the Board of Education, because the last thing you'd want to do is go all the way down, have two towns approve it, and the commissioner go and say, nope, yeah, can't, yeah, can't do that. So, I next just wanted to, you know, sort of emphasize, you know, the importance of why. So, you know, so I, I shared with the Harwich Select Board that the last time we addressed or amended the regional agreement was, you know, was in, in town meetings 2021. And the first, you know, sort of the first step in that process is I had written, written a, for lack of a better word, a white paper to the, you know, to our school committee just on a phenomena that was starting to really be noticeable with our regional assessment and how it played out within our school district, where it was sort of an economics scenario with Chatham Elementary getting increasingly smaller and smaller and smaller relative to the enrollment at Harwich Elementary. It was just, it was just far more expensive in a small elementary school to provide the same level of services as in a larger elementary school. And the way the original agreement was originally written, it had Harwich paying essentially for three-quarters of the cost based on student enrollment. And, and what I had, you know, what I had indicated is, you know, we could see that if we had shifted the regional agreement to have both towns pay for their elementary school, it would be, it would be, you know, more equitable when you look at, I, I think, what the intent of the regional agreement was. I don't think anybody, when they were launching into the new region, you know, had intended for, you know, for Harwich, you know, Harwich taxpayers to be subsidizing the cost of a smaller elementary school. And I think it was a why that resonated, you know, in Chatham, it resonated in Harwich, and it was, and we were able to go and get to that majority vote at both town meetings. So, again, you know, my conversation at the Harwich Select Board was to emphasize the importance of the why, you know, that people have to understand, if we're going to change the regional agreement, why are we changing it? And what is, you know, is that why sort of conveyed in a matter that membership from both towns can understand? So, you know, so one of the things that I also wanted to share with the Select Board was a, there was a study that was done back in December 2020. It was the last time the state did this, but they looked at every municipality in the state and how much of the municipal general fund went towards education. And I think one of the concerns that, that we had, you know, that we had been hearing in Harwich is that, is that the school spending was approaching half of their, you know, of their town's general, you know, general fund. And, you know, what, you know, what I put in the slide is just to kind of indicate that, that yes, you know, Harwich spends, has a lot more of its general fund goes towards education, but it's actually less than what the state average is, and it's very similar to many of the communities around. Now, granted, you know, Chatham, you know, Chatham, you know, Wellfleet, you know, Province Town are in a very different scenario in terms of just the, the demographics that, that are starting to populate both, or each of those towns. But generally, you know, generally speaking, the, the percentage of, of Harwich's budget in this 20, in this 2020 study was, you know, was 41% of its, of its general fund, where looking across the state, that state average is closer to 50%. And I know when I was off Cape, the town that I lived in off Cape, it was 75% of the town's general fund went, went towards the schools. You know, so the long and short is, you know, the conversation was really focused on, okay, what is the why? And, you know, trying to, you know, trying to emphasize that, that why needs to be articulated in a manner that can be heard across, you know, across the, you know, town lines, because, you know, it, you know, it can't be just something that Harwich has, you know, says, okay, this is what our need is. It has to resonate in Chatham, it has to resonate in Chatham too, and be approved in both towns to, to pass. So, as I said, it was sort of a short and sweet, you know, so the, the, at the last school committee meeting, last Thursday, our board went and voted to approve a letter back to the Harwich Selectmen, just acknowledging that they, they had received, that they had received the letter, that they will be looking at, you know, looking at the regional agreement, and, and also encouraging, you know, encouraging the board to, you know, to bring forward proposals, if there are proposals to be brought forward. I think the, you know, I think the awkwardness is that, you know, that you can, the agreement is not between the school committee and the two towns, the, the agreement's between the two towns. And I, I think back, you know, if we go back in time to 2020, when I was, you know, writing that white paper, it was, that was something from at least where I was. There was nothing I could do as, as the superintendent to go and make this per pupil spending at Chatham Elementary School and Harwich Elementary School the same, you know, without drastically reducing services at Chatham Elementary School. And, and that wasn't something that I'd felt comfortable with and that my board felt comfortable with. So, you know, so here's a mechanism that we could use to go and at least fix that, that piece of the inequity that I saw back then. I, I think for this one, you know, there's, we would need, you know, the town of Harwich, and we'd need, you know, our partners to kind of come forward with what would make sense if there's some sort of change to the agreement. But again, what we had, what was in the letter that went back to the Harwich Select Board were suggestions like, it might be beneficial to, you know, to have our finance director, and of course, you know, Michael McMillan's like, I can't believe he's saying this, but actually it came as a suggestion from Michael, that, you know, that, you know, that our finance offices work with, you know, the town of Harwiches and the town of Chatham's, and, and look at five-year projections, and, and occasionally hold joint meetings where each town can understand where the other, you know, where the other is coming from and what, you know, what the regional school districts' needs are. I know when I was off Cape, we had routine meetings. It happened almost every year where we'd have one joint board where it was actually the, the select boards from, you know, from both Lincoln and Sudbury, and the, and the school committee would come together to go talk about that sort of joint, you know, you know, working together. And again, I, I know that there was sort of the first step last year towards that, but I think, you know, the more conversation that could be had, you know, potentially the better. So, I'll stop there and answer questions if you have them.
Yeah, thank you. I did want to say that I spoke yesterday with the vice, our vice chair of the school committee, Mr. Schiff, who is the Chatham representative. He had a conflict this evening, but I wanted to get some background on what was happening here when, once I got the email from the chair of the school committee. And, you know, I think we're talking largely about process tonight, but the letter from the Harwich Select Board from, to the school committee essentially asks that the school committee undertake the process of reviewing the regional agreement at this five-year interval that's upcoming. But they really don't offer any specifics as to, you know, what they're looking for. This sort of gets to the issue of why.
Right.
We can read the newspapers or watch the meetings of the Harwich Select Board. I think we have a sense of where they're, where they're going, but I guess I'll throw it open to, I, I did have a procedural question, and then I guess Mr. Dykens wants to talk. But on, in your slide, you do talk about the requirement for majority vote of approval by each member town at the annual town meeting. What happens if a proposal is put forward? I guess, does it, does it come from the school committee to the towns? Is that how that works?
Yes, so.
Let's say Harwich wants to do X, and Chatham doesn't join in that.
So, I, I think, I, I think if, if you look at the way the regional agreement is spelled out, it would have to come from a, a voter petition.
Okay.
You know, so that you hit that 10% threshold, that then it gets put on to, you know, put on to a warrant article in both, in both towns. Or it is, you know, the proposal comes forward to the school committee, and the school committee then has to have a majority of its membership vote. And, and again, you know, that's
And then we're required to put it on the warrant.
Harwich and Chatham, you know, we have four Harwich, you know, four Chatham representatives on that. So, you know, so to have that, you know, to have 4.5 votes, you'd have to have membership from Chatham that are saying, yes, this makes, this makes sense too. It can't be just, you're not going to get to 4.5 votes with just one town's school committee members.
And then, but if the school committee does have, get that 4.5, it has to go on the warrant in each town's annual meeting?
Correct.
Okay. And the other way is by petition. So, let's say, let's take it a step farther. So, let's say a proposal is put forward, it's on the warrant, and one town votes yes, and the other town votes no. So, it's not adopted by, by that?
Correct. It has to pass at both.
And, and so in that circumstance, does the Commissioner of Education have any authority if, if he or she determines that the proposal is something that should happen to step in and say to the town that rejected it, no, I want this approved, it has to happen?
I, I, I don't, I, I don't know that.
It's a legal question, I guess.
The Commissioner can't, you know, can't go and override that, but I'm sure that if there was something out there that the Commissioner, you know, might weigh in with some, some guidance, but I can't, you know, but, but that guidance alone doesn't, you know, doesn't override the, the annual town meeting votes. That's
On the other hand, if it is approved, the Commissioner could still reject it.
Correct. And there's, there are, there's, there are some things, you know, so the, the Commissioner's office has a whole legal department, you know, so you could imagine that, you know, that, you know, Harwich and Chatham decide they want to change something about the regional agreement, but, but the Commissioner's office has, their legal team says, you know, that's, you know, illegal to, you know, to do that. You know, you could, you know.
Okay.
You know, if, if you had something in the regional agreement that threw out open meeting law, you know, they, you know, their legal team would say, no, you can't, you, of course, you can't do that. You know, so, you know, so the Commissioner's office, you know, a lot of what they're looking at is finance structures and also just the legality of, of the different parts within the agreement.
Okay, thank you. Comments? Mr. Dykens?
Yeah, thank you, Dean, and thank you, Scott. You know, I thought you did a really good job this summer when you had the, kind of the planning session. I attended that, as did a couple of select board members from Harwich. And I thought you did a great job articulating the need for really explaining any change in the agreement as to the why. And you've emphasized it here in this presentation as well. You know, Harwich, I think, thinks they're spending too much money on, on schools, but okay, but, but, but why? And, and what's the rationale for any change? The other point you made, and you've, you made it recently in at that meeting, was whatever either town would like to do with the change in the regional agreement, keep it simple. Keep it so that it's, it's understandable and, and has a rationale that both towns can understand. That the 2021 change for our taking on our elementary schools was, was clear to this town that there wasn't inequity. And, and you explained it well, and it passed. But the ball, kind of my pea brain is in Harwich's court to articulate why they believe they're spending too much, and, and again, why, and what's the rationale for that? So, in terms of process, kind of waiting for them. I don't think it's, the ball's not in our court to, to say that, yeah, we agree, and here you go. We need to hear why. And I, I thought, I think you've done a really good job trying to explain that, and also been very clear with, and, and a presentation of the process needed to make a change in the regional agreement. Very clear, so.
Thank you. One, one last point on the amendment's provision. So, as I'm reading that, if 10% of the voters of one of the towns signs the petition, so Harwich, for example, because they initiated, they're trying to initiate this, they only have to get 10% of their own voters to initiate a proposal that requires
Right.
Chatham to put it on the warrant.
And again, I, you know, I just keep coming back to the whole piece on why.
Yeah.
Whatever that, whatever that proposal is, needs to be, needs to be clear, and, you know, people need to understand it.
Yes.
You can, you can go and get 10% to go and sign off on anything.
Yes, I know that.
But you have to remember that the other town also has to go, and, and, and I, and I shared it with the, you know, the Harwich Select Board. You know, the last time we went to change the regional agreement in, in 2021, it's, it's not like people in Chatham just stood up and said, oh, yes, you man, you know, there wasn't a unanimous vote. There, there were a number of people going up to the mics at town meeting, you know, just with different feelings about the agreement and whether or not that Chatham should take on, you know, more of a financial burden. You know, so it's, you know, so I, I think we need to understand that, you know, that's, it's a, it's, you know, if Chatham, if the, you know, if an amendment has Chatham paying more, I'm sure it's going to easily pass, I would guess, in Harwich Town Meeting. How's that explained in a way that the taxpayers in, in Chatham understand what their, what their gain is?
I just have one, one follow-up. And to the, to your point, and my support of your point about keeping it simple, that the approach that has been suggested from a particular member of the community in Harwich about using assessed values to rejigger the regional agreement in terms of the allocation of cost to both towns using assessed value, that's a very difficult, complicated, convoluted explanation to bring to town meeting. So, I understand perhaps the rationale behind it, but it's just really difficult, would be a really difficult one to sell in my, in my pea brain.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's very complicated.
And I, and I did, yeah, I did talk a little bit about that at the, at the Harwich meeting. And so, you know, on this, this last slide, you know, ideally, you know, ideally, the chapter 70 equation is, is an equation that is supposed to be, you know, it's supposed to establish how much each town is going to have, you know, have to spend on education as, at a minimum, you know, for their, you know, for their towns and the state. And the idea behind the chapter 70 equation is to go and sort of equalize this based on, you know, based on a community's financial wherewithal. You know, there, there are some significant challenges with the chapter 70 equation, but that's not something that, from my vantage point, like, I, I don't have the pulpit to change that one. The Select Board doesn't have the pulpit. It's, you know, it's the legislature, it's the legislators that need to change that formula. And, you know, and I, and I do understand, you know, you know, some, you know, some that have kind of written to the Harwich Select Board, you know, are have, you know, are coming up with financial situations to, I think, I, I would, I would argue to, you know, to address inequities in the chapter 70 equation. But the chapter 70 equation, I would say, is like advanced calculus, and some of the solutions are, you know, are just another form of advanced calculus. You know, so I, I, I do think trying to keep it simple and being able to explain it's going to be, going to be important to get something sold in both towns.
From your previous presentations to us, I remember From your previous presentations to us, I remember that the comparative assessed values of the two communities is already part of the base calculation of the assessments formula.
It's part, it's part of the chapter 70.
Yes.
Equation. And the, the way, you know, the, one of the reasons I think it, it is also flawed is that, is that for the, essentially, like, the top 20%, you know, the 20% most wealthy communities, it treats them as one, you know, as, as sort of equal. So, you know, so there's, there can be a vast difference. You can imagine even if you're looking at grading, you know, there's a big difference between an 80% and 100%. You know, so it's that, that difference, I think, is what's, what's flawed. The other challenge with the chapter 70 equation is that it's great if you're looking at it through a single town lens. So it worked great for Chatham when, when it was just Chatham Public, or when it was just Harwich Public, or where it's Mashpee, or Barnstable. But when you're in a region, it, it doesn't account for slight differences on where you are along that, that sort of spectrum.
Okay. Shereen, Ms. Davis?
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate the emphasis on the why and the rationale and bringing it in that manner. I just have a clarifying question about the, the amendment, the 10%. Were you saying that if Harwich brought 10% to bring that to a vote, it would have to apply not just to Harwich but to Chatham as well? Or would Chatham have to bring 10% on the same?
So I, I would have to go get a legal consult to see if it has to be 10% in both towns. But I can go and.
Yeah, that seems like a pretty important, like, for me to say that another town is going to be able to tell us what we can, you know, like, something like that just seems a little, as a citizen's petition, that seems a little skewed in my rationale, but, yeah.
It should be clarified. I mean, I.
Yeah, it's a little.
I can, I'll, I'll research and get back to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Matters?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, first, first of all, I wanted to back up a second. And I want to very thank, you know, we've had some meetings leading up to this. Select Board Member Dykens and former Select Board Member Shell have engaged in dialogue with leadership of Harwich. And I very much appreciate their past efforts. But if anyone has watched that tape or attended any of those meetings, you know, the tone has, you know, been a little uncomfortable at times. But I think they have stayed, stayed steady for Chatham. And with Jeff's long-term background, it's a, it's a great asset for us. Procedurally wise, I do think, going to Shereen's question, the 10% clarification, I think we need to get clarification exactly what triggers the town meeting officially. That would be very helpful. And two, procedurally, you know, voters of Chatham, you know, any voters practically have short memories. And they're going to, you know, you're going to bring up some history. You're going to bring up, you know, well, if Harwich, you know, if Chatham did not join Harwich in the regionalization, what would have been dollars and cents? You know, we, Town of Chatham, put forth the, what was the former Chatham High School on Crowell Road? That facility, there's a dollar amount associated with that. We brought that to the table. You know, the modernized regional facilities, Harwich got to pull out the property on St. Sin Road. You know, there's a dollar value associated with that. So there's a lot of pieces to, some finances that are going to get brought up that, you know, and if, to the why, you know, you know, you can't just dismiss that. So it's, it's going to open up some very interesting, colorful conversations. And, you know, I mean, I'm hap, we're happy to have some conversations. And, and at the end of the day, we're looking to figure out what's best for the students. That, that's our ultimate goal. I mean, I think we all agree with that. But I want a very clear understanding of why we're going to do certain things, you know. And then, you know, once we get deeper into the weeds, you know, not, not part of this conversation, but one, one element that has come up to me, that has been thrown at me lately, and I'm, and it's, we're not there yet, is, you know, school choice and some of the elements associated with that, which we'll get deeper into the conversation later. But, you know, it's, 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 there's a lot of history.
Thank you, Mr. Matters. Did you have any comment on that? I did myself watch that meeting. And when it happened, and Mr. Shell and Mr. Dykens did a great job at that meeting. And we got an email today from one of our citizens, kind of summarizing what Mr. Dykens had presented in terms of the benefits that accrued to the Town of Harwich through this merger of the two districts historically. Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Mr. Phillips?
Brian Phillips, 374 Orleans Road. I think it's good that the next agenda items kind of, that are coming up are relevant to this conversation. Because I guess case by case, you know, it might seem a little unfair, but everything is connected. And I think things like the water and sewer, you know, agreements should be taken into account for, this might not be the most favorable, you know, for Harwich. But then also the affordable housing things coming up, you know, trying to get, you know, families and kids here. Thanks.
Thank you. I think it's important to view these things holistically. We want to have good relations with our neighboring towns, and we try to help one another. And so everything should be looked at in context. Any other comments from the public? I don't see any on the screen. Well, thank you very much, Dr. Carpenter, unless you have anything more to say. Appreciate your coming and, and the school committee representatives being here as well. Next item on the agenda is, is to consider as Water and Sewer Commissioners additional sewer flow requests from, for Great Sand Lake's sewer extension from the Town of Harwich per the Chatham-Harwich intermunicipal agreement, the IMA. And who is going to present that?
DPW Director, Rob Failey.
Mr. Failey.
We also have.
We have a representative from the.
Go ahead.
The Town of Harwich, who's the chair of the, Noreen Donahue is the chair of the Harwich Board of Water and Water Waste Water Commissioners. And Mr. Whitcomb is also present. He's a member of the IMA along with our town manager. And Mr. Bogadis is unable to be here this evening. He's our other representative on the IMA. And the town manager of Chatham chairs that body.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Rob Failey, Director of Public Works. So the Town of Harwich has requested additional wastewater flow from the East Harwich serviced area as part of the intermunicipal agreement or IMA. The IMA between the Town of Harwich, the Town of Chatham and the Town of Harwich was finalized in 2017. According to section two of the IMA, Harwich may expand the East Harwich service area to serve the Great Sand Lakes area, subject to the approval of Chatham. Which approval shall not be unreasonably withheld, provided that Harwich shall not extend its sewer system beyond the East Harwich service area if the result of such an extension was caused, would cause Harwich to deliver wastewater to Chatham for treatment in excess of 300,000 gallons per day, unless this agreement is amended. Thank you. I'm going to jump to this, this spreadsheet here. The Great Sand Lakes area has historically been included with the East Harwich service area. Currently, Harwich's wastewater system is operating with a design flow of just under 210,000 gallons. It's a little hard to see up there, and I apologize. Well, actual flows are approximately 162,000 gallons. So the 208,000 gallons is in the green on the left. That's the design flows that DEP requires. In the blue on the right is what the actual flows are. And they're, they're about 162,000 gallons right now. With the planned inclusion of the Great Sand Lakes area, design flows are projected to increase, design flow-wise, to 245,000 gallons. However, anticipated flows would be more modest, reaching approximately 190,000 gallons per day. So at the meeting of the Chatham-Harwich IMA Advisory Board of August 20th, 2025, the request was reviewed in detail with no objections by the Chatham representatives. The meeting is online, it was a public meeting. The Water and Sewer Advisory Committee reviewed the Town of Harwich request on September 8th, 2025, and approved it by a vote of five to zero. And I just, for the record, just wanted to say, this is part, this image is part of the original IMA from 2017. You'll see the yellow highlighted area is the East Harwich service area. And then there's a small area in green that says the Great Sand Lakes area. So that was included in the original request from the Town of Harwich. And just to zoom in, that's the Great Sand Lakes area. It's approximately 275 parcels. And so this is a letter that the Chad, the Harwich Select Board had written to Chatham requesting the additional flow.
Is that it?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Rob. I just had one question. So just to kind of summarize, so currently, the design, the design flow is 210 gallons per day. But they're actually only flowing 162,000.
Correct. I mean, in reality, all they're really putting into Chatham now is around 30,000 gallons per day, until the rest of East Harwich gets expanded.
So the, so the actual flows really aren't actually happening?
They're not. But I think as more properties become hooked up, just, just as Chatham's would, you know, it takes a number of years to get everybody hooked up.
So i- is it conceivable that the, that the actual flow could ultimately, forget about Grand Sex, Grand, Great Sand Lakes for a moment. Is it conceivable that the actual flow could approximate the 210,000 gallons per day?
It's pretty unreasonable and unlikely that it would ever reach that level.
Okay. And if you add Great Sand Lakes in, we, the design flow bumps up from 210,000 to 245, and the actual flow bumps from 162 to 190.
Correct.
And the agreement says that even though they could add Great Sand Lakes in, subject to the approval of the Town of Chatham, they could never get in excess of 300,000?
Correct.
Okay. All right, just wanted to clarify that. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Smith? And then Mr. Matters, and then Mr. Dykens?
Sure, thank you. I just had a couple of questions. The money we collect from Harwich to, you know, deposit their, the sewage into the treatment plant, where does that money, where, where is that used for?
It's for, so there's, there's money that is part of the agreement, spread over the nine years.
Right.
Paid. That goes in, I don't know if it goes into the sewer fund.
It, it goes into a capital stabilization account. That's the, the so-called privilege, privilege fee of being able to use our system. The operating costs, I, I think Carrie is on, I thought that went into the, the water, I'm sorry, the sewer receipts.
That's correct. I think it's around 23, a little over 23% of the operating costs that Harwich pays. It goes into our fund to pay, you know, Veolia pay for chemicals and.
Right. Yep, that makes sense. I don't know.
I would just add that the stabilization fund monies can only be expended on vote of town meetings. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes, it is correct.
Is it a two-thirds, though? I don't, I think it's.
Yes.
Carrie's saying two-thirds.
So the, and, and what is that money over the nine years? Is that, am I, did I read it right? Is it 6.7 million?
Yeah.
And that money goes into our capital costs associated with the sewer?
Yeah, it goes into the stabilization account, which is designed to support sewer, sewer capitalization.
Just sewer.
Sewer capital projects.
Yeah. Great, thank you. And I noticed that, well, first, is there, not that I'm suggesting it, but is there a process to renegotiate that agreement, the agreement we have with Harwich? Is there a process?
Well, Mr. Dykens and I were, along with the town manager, were part of the group that negotiated this agreement with Dr. Duncanson's staff and consultants. So I haven't seen this agreement in eight or nine years. I didn't even remember that Grand Sand, Great Sand Lakes was in there. I would assume there's a provision in that agreement that says on the, with the agreement of both sides, you could, you could amend it, but, because that's typically in any kind of contract. But I don't recall. Jeff, do you?
I do not recall if there's any mechanism to renegotiate it. I mean, it was pretty clear that, you know, we were fairly generous with the 300,000 and that they perhaps would never even ever achieve. It doesn't look like they ever are going to. But I think it's important that the operating costs will cover, you know, help us cover the overall operating costs of the.
Right.
Running the plant. And then the, the capital dollar is really important because we have some fairly large expenditures that have been voted by, what was the, not the big grinder thing, whatever that, what was that called?
The press, the belt filter press.
Belt filter press was four million bucks or five million. It was a big, big number.
And the, okay, so the, the 6.7 over a nine-year period, there's no, more of a question? There's no incremental increase of.
I'm sorry, I just had a clarification. It was over seven years. But there was an amendment in 2021 that brought that payment schedule from five years to seven years because there were so many delays in getting.
Right.
The sewer implemented in Harwich.
Yeah, understood.
We've gotten about four or five already from them.
I think there's one more payment this coming spring for, I think, a million and a half.
One and a half, yeah.
Okay.
And the, and there's, there was, I didn't see it anywhere, but maybe there. There's no incremental increases during that seven-year period or interest or anything on the 6.7?
It was just a flat.
Just as we have increases in operations and maintenance, that, that would be reflected in Harwich.
Maintenance costs would, but the capital was flat.
Yeah, I didn't know if they accounted for the, you know, over seven years, the extra sewage flow and the wear and tear on our equipment versus that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Matters?
No, simply going to say, I mean, the request looks within line for the current agreement. So I don't have an issue with that. I just want to ask this, because many, many years from now, when we're all long gone, and the 300, you know, gallons per day, you know, threshold that may, may be, they may never reach. But obviously, we're monitoring it because we're saying, like, right now, their, their usage is below what they've kind of allotted for. But emptying number of years down the road, if we're starting to hit, hit that 300,000, is there a mechanism to protect us from not going over it? How does that, how is that language written? Or is there a mechanism that says, okay, once you, you, once you reach that 300, you know, there's a moratorium to stop?
Pretty much, yeah. I mean, I, I don't think they'll, they'll never hit it regardless.
Never say never.
Yeah, I know. But even, even so, we have, you know, all of phase one in Chatham, over the next 20 years, we won't even hit that million mark. So adding the 300,000 from Harwich, we're still below our, our permitted amount of 1.3 million. So there, there should be no reason to adjust any kind of flow criteria, at least through phase one.
Okay, thank you.
Stuart, Shereen, did you have something?
I don't have any.
Stuart, go ahead.
Sure. And I, I saw it referenced vaguely somewhere, but is Harwich planning on a treatment plant of their own? Or is the plan here, I mean, there was some serious infrastructure put in. Is, is this a, does it go on forever? I mean, I know the agreement's only seven years. But what's the plan for them building their own? Or are we always going to be taking their sewage?
This is only for East Harwich.
Yeah, I understand.
We do have a, a member of the Water and Sewer, our Harwich Water and Sewer Committee here. If, if she would be.
Ms. Donahue, if you'd like to speak, please.
Good evening. I'm Noreen Donahue. I'm the Chair of the Board of Water Waste Water Commissioners in Harwich. Thank you for taking this matter up. And hello to the Chair and to members of the board. As you know, this particular agreement only covers East Harwich. It was, as you know, intended really for our joint efforts on Pleasant Bay, which is the reason for East Harwich. As to future plans, we have two choices. We can either build one of our own on, probably on our property where our transfer station is, or we can negotiate with some neighboring towns on the west side of Harwich. So as, as you know, we did try a few years ago with the Dennis Harwich Yarmouth. So as, as you know, we did try a few years ago with the Dennis Harwich-Yamath arrangement, and we backed out of that for financial reasons. We were, we were the smaller partner in that particular arrangement. So right now, we're, we're talking with people.
Right, but, but I guess you answered the question, there's no like foreseeable plan for a treatment plant to, for East Harwich?
Not for East Harwich, no.
No, the plan is to always use Chatham's at the moment? Yeah, okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Thank you very much. Any other, any comments from the public? Mr. Whitcomb, did you want to speak? You're a member of the IMA Committee. Welcome.
I just wanted to, I was looking, and the, the agreement does have a termination and has language for increased flow. If it ever got beyond 80%, then they have to give us a heads up. 80% of the 300, they'd have to give us a heads up that that's coming and, and there would be negotiations, I, I assume, after that. So the 6.75 million is in the stabilization fund. We use that to fund something at last town meeting, a fairly big project, and that's town, requires town meeting vote, and that's what happens. And then the operating and maintenance, we get 23%, or Harwich pays us 23%, including, I think, 20% of your salary isn't included in that, so.
Thank you, David. And those improvements approved at town meeting are, that you mentioned, go to sewer improvements?
Yeah.
I'm assuming that's.
Exactly. The, the big stuff.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, David. Jeff?
Just a brief comment, I just, for our overall recollection, that the, one of the strong impetuses or the motivations to do East Harwich was to help clean up Pleasant Bay. So that, that was a primary, it was Section 208, I forget, 280, clean up a Pleasant Bay, and that, that was really the motivating factor to, to do the deal, because we thought it made a lot of sense to help us clean up Pleasant Bay, and Harwich runs Pleasant Bay.
Thank you. Okay. We have, Elaine Gibbs is online.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, just for clarification here, we signed the contract in 2017, and there were going to be four payments. The first one was on the day of signing, and then it was incremental when they first, you know, put in the infrastructure, when they turned on the water, et cetera. According to Mr. Failey, we've made, they've made three of those four payments. So through 2025, it has in fact been eight years and will be nine years before we get the final payment. And we did not charge interest, and that interest, had we done that, because there were delays on their ends by technically four years in terms of construction, it would have been $8.9 million instead of the 6.75. So for any future contracts, I certainly hope that we factor in interest and delays and contracting when we do something like this. I have two specific concerns. I know they're saying that they would never meet the 300,000, but there, there, the first one is that you're all familiar with Harwich East Plaza on 137, that's the one with Verizon, 400, and Sherman Williams. That's on 4.6 acres, and that was sold in December to the Newman Properties of Brookline for 11.6 million. And I think that number is reflecting the fact that there are 4.6 acres. They manage and develop residential and commercial properties. I, there have been rumors that that land is going to be developed, other developers were looking at it, on a lot of that acreage, and that would certainly consume a fair amount of water. So I would ask that that be remembered by you and considered, that that, if that gets connected, or it may or may not get connected, because if all of these things come online at the same time, I, I mean, I'm surprised that it's only 45,000 gallons. All of those residential properties, all up and down 137, are now on sewer. So it's surprising that that's how low the gallonage is. Secondly, about the Great Sand Lakes, I am surprised that that extends that far to the west. That is two miles west of, at the Corner Store. But I just want to point out that 2.5 miles further is going to be the location of the Pine Oaks Affordable Housing Project that's going to have 242 units, and it's massive. There are going to be all kinds of facilities on the property. And from what I was able to read in the engineering plans, that initially it's going to have an alternative system on the property, but eventually get hooked up to the sewer. So I would hope that we at no time extend our sewer system past this East Harwich boundary, which ends at Great Sands Lake. We've got to get busy on connecting our properties and, and saving that, because in listening to Mr. Dunkinson the other day, the DEP has limits of 5% on something, or five, I don't know what the formula is, to, for the effluent into Cockle Cove, even though Dunkinson thinks it could handle a lot more. But I don't want to get to a point where we, you know, suddenly we need the flow for treatment, and we can't do it because we've got a contract, you know, for 20 to 30 years, and I think we have to give them five years' notice and buy back the flow if we run into a problem. So I hope you're cognizant of those kinds of things going on here. That is a huge area that has been sewed and affecting East Harwich, and we're, we need to get that done in our town. We are way, way behind what we had promised our residents and homeowners that they were going to do. We redirected it over to 137, which is less densely populated, and a lot of people have not been connected, but we're all paying for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Any other comments from the public? I don't see anyone else online. David, did you want to say something additionally?
I just want to make a comment on the previous speaker. There was an amendment, as I think DPW Director Failey said, that extended that seven years to nine years, or the other thing was based on the flow. If it reached a certain amount of the flow, then that money would, would come due. Well, we haven't come anywhere near that flow, so it, it's really been a pretty good deal. They've been a good partner. Also, the East Serv, the East Harwich Service Area, which is part of the agreement, which we're talking about tonight, the Harwich flow is limited to the Upper Muddy Creek Subwatershed, Lower Muddy Creek Subwatershed, Pleasant Bay Subwatershed, and the Round Cove Subwatershed. And then it states, Great Sand Lakes area with Chatham approval required. That's the only areas that are covered in the agreement, so anything else would have to be negotiated or go through the IMA, the Committee, and then come to you. So I wouldn't worry about the world getting sewed, going to our plants.
Thank you. Stuart?
Probably just our world getting sewed is what we're trying to hopefully concentrate on, but the 300,000 gallons a day, I mean, I just, I just find this interesting, sorry, but why was it so high? Why was that limit so high if we don't seem to be even getting close to it?
Well, the limits are high because of the flow from, it's the state, or who?
It's, it's the design flow from DEP, but also there are some vacant parcels that are, are ready for development that could increase the flow. So they wanted, I believe they wanted to build some capacity in there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Trying to crystal ball.
All right. So no more comments, is there, so we're being asked to approve this flow? It's been recommended by the Water and Sewer Committee, and, and I would ask if there is a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, do you want to read the whole motion, or? Where is it? It's on page two.
I move to formally approve the proposed revisions to the Town of Harwich Sewer Rules and Regulations originally adopted in May 2021.
No, no, that's the, I'm sorry. That's the next one, this is the one.
Gotcha. I move that the Town of Chatham approve the Town of Harwich's request to include the Great Sand Lakes area within, within the East Harwich Service Area is outlined in the 2017 Intermunicipal Agreement IMA, recognizing that the projected wastewater flows remain well within the 300,000 gallons per day allocation previously authorized. This approval is based on the analysis indicating sufficient existing capacity and minimal fiscal impact to the Town of Chatham.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. I will call the roll unless there's further discussion. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, so that's approved. Thank you. Next item is also related to the Town of Harwich on the sewer project. Consider revisions to the Town of Harwich Sewer Rules and Regulations per the Chatham-Harwich Intermunicipal Agreement. Mr. Failey?
Good evening again. Yes, so the Town of Harwich has proposed revisions to its sewer rules and regulations, originally adopted in 2021, because these regulations form part of the contractual framework established under the intermunicipal agreement between the towns of Harwich and Chatham. Any proposed amendments must be submitted to Chatham for review and comment in accordance with Section 10C of the IMA. The Town of Harwich Sewer Rules and Regulations were modeled after the Town of Chatham's and must be equivalent in scope and stringent, stringency, apologies, although periodic updates are necessary. So the document remains largely unchanged from the previous version, several formatting updates, grammatical changes, replacement of the term director with superintendent throughout, and I have noted some more substantial changes in, in my staff report. I can go through those if you chose, if you choose. At the meeting of the Chatham-Harwich IMA Advisory Board on August 20th, 2025, the request was reviewed in detail with no objections by the Chatham representatives. The Water and Sewer Advisory Committee reviewed the proposed changes to the Town of Harwich Rules and Regulations and endorsed the changes by a vote of five to zero at their September 8th meeting. And after Town Council reviewed the proposed changes, there was a recommended change on page 17 under subsection L. The second sentence under number one states exceptions to, but they should be modified to read examples of instead. So subsequently, I spoke to the Harwich Water and Wastewater Superintendent, who agreed with the language change, and I'm happy to go through the individual edits if you like.
Well, it's in the staff report, and, you know, just by topic, I'll mention that one has to do with undeveloped parcels, the word vacant is added. There's a section on grinder pumps, I want to touch on that in a second. Solid materials discharged to the waste stream, there's additional detail, and then there's a section on low-pressure grinder pumps or lift pumps detailing the type of pump required. The rest of the changes are basically, most of the changes are, are changed in the title of the Director of, of the Superformer Superintendent of the, of the Harwich Sewer System is now called, I'm sorry, the former Director is now called the Superintendent, so that language has changed. The proposal that is to approve these with the additional clarification that was proposed by our Town Council.
That's correct.
In, in L. So that's what it is, unless someone wants this in greater detail. The only thing I wanted to comment on, because the subject of grinder pumps, in terms of ma, the maintenance of grinder pumps, is still an unresolved issue in the Town of Chatham, and I know the Water and Sewer Committee and the staff are going to be considering that, and then it'll come before us as Water and Sewer Commissioners. We did vote a policy to provide a free grinder pump, plus $2,000, to someone that is obligated to, to connect because of topography or low pressure, and that's also going to be administered retroactively. But it's interesting when, because this section was highlighted, I note that the Town of Harwich is also providing a grinder pump, they're not providing a replacement grinder pump, and that, they're making the property owner responsible for all maintenance of the pumping system and for any replacement. That's literally, and, and there's, is something that we might want to keep in mind when we have to address the subject of grinder pumps. Is there any, are there any questions or comments from the board? Or from the public? Mr. Whitcomb, did you have anything you wanted to add? Ms. Donahue, did you have anything? Okay, so I will entertain a motion. This is the long motion that you were going to recite before.
Okay, Dean. I move that the Town of Chatham formally approve the proposed revisions to the Town of Harwich Sewer Rules and Regulations originally adopted in May 2021, with the corrections noted. Although formal approval is not explicitly required, these regulations are incorporated into the contractual framework governing discharges into the Chatham sewer system from East Harwich. Therefore, it is in the town's best interest to review and endorse the updated regulations as modified and discussed.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Okay, well done. Thank you, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Donahue, for coming here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb. Okay, next item. Review of Seasonal Communities Draft Regulations and Consider Submitting a Letter of Comment. This is our Select Board Agenda Item Request by Ms. Davis, and I know we have a comment period deadline that's, that's upcoming, so this is very timely. And I know there was a presentation at the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association, Ms. Davis and Mr. Dykens were present at that to hear it. So Shereen, I guess I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. So.
I should, excuse me, I should also add, doesn't Gloria McPherson on this, too?
She was here, she.
Had to leave?
Had to go, but it looks like Katie Donovan is on, too.
Okay, so Katie Donovan is on, okay. Sorry.
Thank you, no worries. Yeah, so the seasonal communities draft regulations are being considered for public comment in the next couple of, of weeks. It's pretty timely. The public comment period ends late October, and the final regulations will be presented in November and for final approval in December, so this is moving pretty quickly. Basically, I just think it's important that since we have, you know, talked about it and, and had made some recommendations to adding in some commercial and essential, other essential workers into the mix of the seasonal communities, we should actually write a letter in support, or a comment letter, that, that if anybody has any issues with any of the, any of the proposals that you see in the regulations to, that we address them, and, you know, just write a, a letter in support. That's all I really have. The, the presentation that we saw was Mark Welsh, Walsh made the presentation on the different pieces to it. Basically, there were some by right zoning laws, some AMI changes, there was the ability to set up regional trusts, address zoning tiny houses and undersized lots. I'm just like, Katie, you can jump in if you want, but this would be an opportunity for us to, to look at this and, and just bring some comments together. So all I'd really like to do is have staff just pen a letter, have like either the Chair look at it, and then sign and send it forward for, for the comment period.
Thank you, Shereen. Katie, did you have anything to add to that? There's something.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Something in the staff memo suggesting some revisions that you might, the town might want to propose, right?
Yes, that's correct. So if you'll see, Gloria did a pretty comprehensive memo at the conclusion of the staff report with the suggested motion. She had made some recommendations for the Board to consider, including in its comment letter to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So if the Board is amenable to that, we can work on a letter to, to get up there by the deadline.
And there's something about undersized lots that you're commenting, the suggestion is we comment on that.
Yes. The comments under undersized lots is recommend that the regulations add language in either 76.02 definitions or 76.04 zoning requirements, that undersized lots are those that are in existence at the time of adoption of the required undersized lot zoning bylaw. This would prevent the creation of new undersized lots. And then the second recommendation is that language is added to allow a municipality to establish a minimum lot size for undersized lots, although for lots that are not on sewer and are subject to wastewater regulations, Gloria states that this will not be much, much of an issue.
Okay. I did want to say that there are two things here, that, one, I, I would just mention for the sake of mentioning, in the draft regulations, they deal with the residential exemption. I think this is in the statute, that the town could go from 35% up to 50%. That's how I read it.
That, that was one of the recommendations.
Yeah, that's in the regs. I mean, I'm, I'm not going to oppose these because that's in there, but I just point that out. One thing I did have a concern about has to do with the. One thing I did have a concern about has to do with the tiny, tiny homes. So the way I, the way this works, as I understand it, the, the town is required within 18 months, unless that's moved to 24 months, to change its zoning bylaw to allow a tiny house, which is defined as a 400-square-foot house, I think, to be placed on any lot within a single-family zoning district of right, as of right. They don't need to get a special permit or variance. That's how I'm reading this. Is that correct, Katie?
Yes, that is correct. Though, in conversations with our building commissioner, the, the way that they're looking at this is that tiny home, somebody could actually build a tiny home on a conforming lot today, as long as it met building code. So the size...
On a conforming lot.
Doesn't matter. On a conforming lot, right. So that, the size doesn't necessarily matter as long as it meets building code and all other state code requirements.
Right. So instead of a 15-foot side yard, they might have a 50-foot side yard. But what about a, on a non-conforming lot? How is, what happens there? If, can they just go in a, right now, if you wanted to build a house on a non-conforming lot, you'd have to get a special permit or variance, depending on the topography.
Right. Now, if you were going to try to build on a non-conforming lot now that didn't already have a house on it, you would need a variance. I'm just looking through this, I apologize. Gloria wasn't able to stay at the meeting, but I don't believe that there's a requirement for tiny homes on undersized lots, although I suppose a tiny home could be allowed on the undersized lots that were allowed under the other, the other recommendation.
I, I don't know what the ramifications would be in the town of Chatham. I don't know how many lots would be eligible. I just, the, the concept of having an as of right, ability to build a tiny home on an undersized lot does concern me. On a non-conforming lot does concern me. I don't know if others feel this. I mean, I don't know if that's a comment we would want to make, but I guess Cory first.
I would, I just think we should have this conversation because, I mean, I don't know how many it would apply to. I mean, I'm familiar with one area that has a, you know, on paper, a small, I guess, house lot is identified, it's got a parcel number. No one's ever going to build a house on it because it's too small, but could this open the door for a tiny house? Tiny houses don't seem to have any kind of connection with wastewater requirements. So there's, I don't know how many, but I want to tread very carefully on this one because I get the intent, but I do think there's some scenarios that we, we try to want to avoid. So I guess the undersized lot, you know, conference definition, and it's, bottom line for me, we need to have this conversation, but I do think there's some things we want to make sure we, we cover.
Dean, I sort of, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I, when I think of a tiny house or tiny lot, I think of a cottage, and I think of a cottage colony, you know, sort of scenario. I don't think it's any, really any bigger difference than that, but it is opportunity for, for more housing, more tools in the toolbox for us to have. And I, you know, if we want to write a letter that, that stresses what we, the, the things that we are really in agreement of, I'd appreciate if we didn't put in anything that we're concerned, you know, that we're opposed to, because we really haven't had time to talk about it, and we won't have time because it's October...
31st.
There, no, the, the, the comment period is, yeah, it's like the 30th of October. So we're not going to have any time, but I think if we, it would be very telling if Chatham doesn't put a letter in supporting the seasonal community since we, this was something that we voted at town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that, and I hadn't really scoped this out. I just, this was the one item that kind of stuck, stuck out at me, and if we were, if, if the board were concerned about the tiny house matter, we, it could consider sending a letter supporting the regs, but with a request that that be modified. I don't know. I'm just throwing that out. I don't know what, what, what we would say. Cory, and then Stuart.
Well, I just think for, for, make sure we got our information correct is, the tiny houses are about 400 square feet, I think, by definition.
Yes.
That's a small unit.
It is.
It is a small unit. So cottage colonies, I'm thinking like some of the traditional colonies, they're probably two or three times that size, twice the size, probably on average. So we just got to keep that in perspective.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the, at the proposed regulations on page six. It says, "A seasonal community that thus shall amend its zoning to allow the following uses as of right and in single-family residential zoning districts in accordance with the procedures for zoning adoption and amendments set forth in 48." It, it doesn't qualify, the language is not qualified as to distinguish between conforming and non-conforming lots. And then one of the items that's allowed as of right is the tiny house, as long as it's a year-round housing unit. I need, I need to point that out. Stuart, did you have something you wanted to say?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I feel like, I feel like I'm being rushed into something that I don't completely, I'm not sure the public completely understands. The...
It's the Commonwealth that's rushing us. I'm just...
Well, how long have, have we had, have we had this?
We just got this. I mean...
It's, the regulations came out.
Their notice is dated.
Notice was dated. I don't know where, when it is, but the public notice date is, oh, it says the deadline. It doesn't say the date of publication.
It was September 30th.
September 30th. It's a typical 30-day review period.
Okay. Go ahead, Stuart.
Well, we don't know, I guess, back to Cory's question, we don't know how many lots this might affect. Have we heard from the zoning board on this as to what their thinking is on, because it looks like we have to, they, we have to comply, our zoning would have to comply with these regulations. That seems...
Well, we have not. I'm not sure they were even aware of this, nor the planning board, for that matter. They're the ones that would have to propose.
Katie has her hand up.
Yeah, Katie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the, the town would have to adopt zoning relative to undersized lots and tiny homes. So we would go through a typical zoning bylaw amendment process, similar to any other zoning bylaw amendment process. So it would follow public hearings through the planning board, probably a lot of, you know, different, a lot of meetings to look at the regulations or to look at the proposed bylaw, the public hearing before the planning board. It would come back before the select board, and it would have to be approved by town meeting. So there's a lot of process that still goes into place before the tiny homes or the undersized lots would be approved from a zoning standpoint. So there would be a...
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I was just going to say, so there's a lot of opportunity for comment prior to any adoption.
Well, I always get nervous about, you know, voting for something and adopting something, and then there's very little way to undo it. I'm a little bit concerned that we have so little time to digest this and have a, you know, a more comprehensive look see into this and the ramifications. We haven't heard, is there, the agenda report, is there a, is there a town council review on that, or did I?
So I, the process you write, the process, oh, you're asking her? Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Katie.
Shereen, if you have a comment, go ahead, please.
Well, I'm just saying that the, the Seasonal Communities Act came before us, and the opportunity to become a seasonal community started back well before our town meeting last year. And so we've had like basic concepts that have been discussed in that, in that act, and we voted in favor of becoming the community, knowing that this would be opportunity to create tools that could help move forward year-round housing in a, in a more streamlined manner. The, these are recommendations that are coming out of the housing, and the new, I can't even remember the new act.
Yeah, Chelsea.
Yeah, thank you. And, yeah, thanks. And so this is a public comment period for a hearing to discuss this. This is a long process that, you know, this will go through this hearing, public comments will happen, there'll be deliberations at the state law to talk about all the different aspects of this. There'll probably be things added or deleted out of it based on recommendations, and then it will be voted on and, and then taken for a review process again before it is adopted. So this is just one piece of it, and we have fundamentally supported seasonal communities. And as I said, if we simply could write a letter in support of this, and if there's an issue here that we don't want to, that we have concern, I would simply say it's a concern. I wouldn't get into, let's look at legal counsel, but we're not, if we slow walk this, we're not going to be able to comment, and I don't think that's fair to the process. But I think that we could express concerns, or some of the board had concerns, or take a vote to see if the board voted that that's a concern. But this is a, just a, a part of the process.
Well, if, if we're going to have a letter sent that's going to be signed by the chair, I think whatever the letter's going to say, it should have, we should have a vote on that tonight, tonight, and, and also, you know, indicate what's in the letter. We've already had a couple of recommendations from the staff of a couple of changes they'd like to see made. And I introduced the, the subject of tiny homes because it, it strikes me that whatever the process is going forward for adopting bylaws, and that's what they say we're supposed to do, there is a mandate in these regulations that that process, that that, that the end result of that is to require, is to allow a tiny home as of right in a residential single-family district. That's how I'm reading this. And is that, and the question for the board, that I put to the board is, is that a concern?
We, we get a legal, I'm sorry.
Mr. Dykens.
So then, but it also has to go through our, our local process for changing zoning. So it's not, you shall do this. It still has to go through our, our local process.
But I don't, I don't, I guess I'm, I'm reading this to mean that if you don't do it, they'll, they'll, whatever their remedy is, they can kick, kick you out of the seasonal community category.
I'm uncertain about that.
I think they're, I think they're mandating the end result of the zoning bylaw process. That's how I'm reading it. Maybe I'm reading it wrong.
Well, that's how I'm reading it.
Mr. Maderes?
I guess for clarification, because it says in, in the packet, it says, "Requires that municipalities adopt zoning that permits undersized lot and tiny house development as of right in all single-family residential zoning districts." So it requires us, we go through the process of the town meeting to get a zoning change, which we know in Chatham can be very difficult, but, but if it, if it doesn't pass, what is that, what does that do? What is, what is, you know, what is the result? I guess for clarification, mechanically, if we say, let's go forward with this, we go to town meeting, we put a zoning change out to conform with the requirements here, and it does not pass, where does that leave us? I guess that's, I just, at some point, I'd like to get clear.
Well, there is a provision that they, they can revoke your designation as a seasonal community, and then you'd lose these other benefits, and they specify that this is 76.12 at the end. But I don't, I mean, I don't even know how many, you know, lots would be affected in the town of Chatham, that a tiny house, I mean, we know somebody can put a tiny house on a conforming lot, and we know that, but now they can do that without any...
My concern is typically in an agenda packet, we have at least the, at least we have the option in a legal analysis or opinion.
It does say on page seven, legal review not applicable.
Well, that's my, my point, when there's, there appears to be 21 pages of legal guidelines and restrictions, and at least five statutes referenced, if that's, I, I may end up supporting the seasonal communities. I don't know, but I don't...
I'm favorable in general. I'd like to see this go forward and on a timely basis, especially since I'm the one that's probably going to have to sign the letter. But I'll throw it open to the board, and I know we have some opportunity for public comment, too. Cory, and then Jeff.
Well, in general, getting a letter, moving it forward, I'm, I'm fine with. I do think Chatham, you know, I look at our makeup, we have a tremendous amount of pre-existing non-conforming lots. We have undersized lots, it's, you know, we have, you know, multiple zoning areas. I think that putting something in the letter to just at least address it to some level is appropriate. So with...
I'd like to vote on that, though, Cory.
So, yeah, so, so fine. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with moving a letter forward. We understand it's a process further down, and I think, I think at some point, we should get legal counsel to weigh in on, on some of the stuff that Stuart's bringing up. I definitely do. But I think from, the next step for us is to, you know, bring forth a letter, you know, support, but I do think we need, and at least I would prefer to recognize the, the undersized lot element and having some, maybe some, I'm not saying concerns, but how to word it somewhat, that we identify it, highlight it for our community, that that's something that's on our radar. That's, that is where I, I'm landing.
Can I just throw this out for consideration by the board? Well, there are two things. Number one, would, would there be any receptivity to a letter that is generally in favor, recites the points that we'd like, that have been highlighted by the staff, the two points that we mentioned before, and with respect to tiny lot, tiny homes, say something like, we are, we have, we have a concern about the mandate on this? We would ask you to consider whether you want to impose that mandate, something to that effect. I mean, that's a crude way of raising it, rather than saying we're outright opposed to it. I don't know if that's something that, I would like to see a unanimous vote from this board on whatever we do, but throw that out. If not, I'll turn to the public for comment. Jeff?
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think we can write a letter that says on the undersized lots and the tiny, tiny homes, that we recognize the, the hard realities of getting bylaw changes and zoning bylaw changes through town meeting, and so our comments are guided with the caveat that this is, that mandate may not be, you know, it may not be possible, given the difficulties of so doing. And that's not very good language, but there are a couple of things that I really want to weigh in very strongly for. One is including healthcare workers as essential employees. I think that's huge. I think it's critical. And I think that getting another, it's clear with this discussion, getting another six months and to, to, to process this locally or to get it done with two town meeting cycles is very important. So, so I think, I think we, critically, we need to respond, and I think those are two points we absolutely have to respond to, and the notion that, hey, guys, wait a second, we, we need some time to digest this, never mind with the challenge of getting it through a local zoning bylaw.
I just wanted to say that my, my concern in raising this on tiny homes is not related to the process or the difficulty of getting anything passed in town of Chatham. It really goes to this notion of, do we want this in Chatham?
Okay.
That's what I was getting at.
I have no idea.
But, but I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear. The other point I wanted to make is, we are going to have a meeting on the, in the morning of the 20th. We just decided to do that.
Yep.
It's conceivable, I should think, that whatever we come up with tonight, we could have our letter drafted, and we could have an opportunity to look at that letter and take a vote on the 20th, so that I'm not stuck with having to interpret what five different people think about what I'm supposed to sign.
Just one, one follow-up.
I would add that as an, I was adding that as an agenda item to that.
Okay, I mean, and I'm okay with that, as long as we get the, as we get the letter, but I, it kind of facetiously, it's like, tiny home, McMansions?
I know.
I mean, we've already got McMansions.
I understand.
So at a tiny home once in a while on a, on a undersized lot is going to be okay. We can live with it. We can, we've lived with gigantic, gigungo houses everywhere in this town. I think we can live with a tiny one.
That's a very valid point.
And it offers, frankly, year-round residents an opportunity to have a home over their head that isn't a McMansion that, you know, and hopefully we can, it doesn't bother me one iota, to be honest with you.
No, I appreciate that. Do we know whether, I don't know enough about tiny homes to know, is it in place in other, I don't mean is there bylaw or anything. Is it being utilized in other communities?
I think there's opportunity, I think there's some models out in the Midwest that we've looked at for other housing opportunities that are, have zoning for tiny homes. And it's, you know, when you're building a home now, it's so expensive, too.
Yeah.
So if there's the opportunity to have a small piece of Chatham and put, you know, and you can afford a tiny home per square foot versus something rather larger, and it's year-round, it's deeded year-round, then that's, that's, that's a stepping stone for, you know, one single person or a couple to get a start in the town. If you look at, if you look at our ADU... If you look at, if you look at our ADU laws right now, we don't see people rushing to do ADUs in town. I mean, it's, whatever it is, it is still costly. But I think that, again, this is just another tool in toolbox for us. I understand the mandate is, you know, the by right issue is, can be a bit troubling for people, but, you know, this is a huge deal for us to have these kind of opportunities, especially from Chatham to Provincetown, where we're really struggling with, you know, municipal workers and year-round people working and living in town versus just work, just, you know, just working in town. And I fully believe that, you know, as you said, healthcare workers, food producers, essentially, there are essential workers definitions that I think should be expanded within this realm, that goes beyond that. As I said, this is a letter in the process, and we have plenty of times to be able to talk, you know, to address some of the issues going forward.
And we should, with respect to the occupations, shouldn't we also include the fishermen that we, the fishing community?
Yeah, I mean, we did make that recommendation outside of that.
They could put that in here.
Yeah.
Was there any discussion on Fridays, at Friday's meeting of the KIMLa about tiny homes?
No, it was the.
Because I didn't show up.
In general, the towns that had the designation, there was obviously towns that didn't have the designation, were very much in support of it. And it was across the board to move forward. The Cape and Islands municipal leaders are putting a letter together in account, too.
I have one more facetious comment. I apologize in advance, but we're very artful about maximizing the use of square footage for a building on a less than half an acre, or we're very artful about maximizing our land. Well, flip that on its head a little bit and say, can we get artful about having smaller homes? And I think the use of tiny is really unfortunate. I think it's smaller, or very small, or whatever, on undersized. I think flip it on its head, and maybe we can get artful as well to provide folks small houses that can't afford big ones. Thanks.
All right, I'm going to go. Stuart?
Well, I'll wait here. Well, I don't want, I'm concerned about unintended consequences. And this seems like one of those things that could happen to. All I'm asking is for more information. I think it's terrible that the state has given us, you know, so limited time to respond to this, and it seems to me like we might be forced into doing something with our zoning bylaws that we don't want to do. And I don't know if I want to sign a letter of support now, not knowing those consequences. And a legal counsel would be helpful. I understand the short period of time, you know, ask them for another month. This is, it's very concerned about being rushed into another, which could be a very, could be very good. I don't, I couldn't care less about tiny homes. They look pretty cool when I see them in a magazine, but I'd like to know what I'm getting into.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to turn to the public comment. I'll start online first, I think Elaine Gibbs, and then there's an AR, I'm not sure where that is, will be next. Elaine, you're first.
Thank you. I have to say that this is far more than just about tiny homes, and I do think it's premature for us to sign on and to support it without legal counsel. When we, when town meeting approved it in May, all they did was approve that it was a seasonal community without having these proposed regulations that were going to impact We're being asked to adopt these regulations without town council here to explain them to us. If I understand correctly, and putting this all together, by right, year-round affordable housing is permitted in all single-family residential zone districts in Chatham. It applies to both rental and ownership of affordable housing, as long as it's used as a principal residence for 10 months or more to an occupant. In this package, it also says that the Affordable Housing Trust can use funds to purchase real property for this purpose. The regulation requires, quote, "Municipalities adopt zoning that permits undersized lots and tiny homes." So all undersized lots are included in this. And by right, in all single-family residential zone districts, and must send the text of zoning to the E H L O C within 60 days of adoption. This act effectively eliminates all single-family residential districts in Chatham if it falls under the affordable housing. And I'll give you an example. The Affordable Housing Trust could buy land in any single-family residential district in Chatham that has been grandfathered undersized lots in an R20 or an R40 zoning. We have them all over the place, they're constantly before the zoning board of appeals, if you recall. That is when they used to, they were small lots, and then they got changed to R20s or R40s, and have been for many, many years. They're saying that has to be ignored. So the town could buy a piece of land, the Affordable Housing Trust could find one of those non-conforming lots that could be a half an acre in an R20. That's considered a non-conforming lot, because it was grandfathered, and they could put up whatever that lot takes. Or someone with additional property could build, do the same thing. I have the acreage here, I could suddenly say, I want, you know, I'm going to let the town put four units on the top of my hill, and I would be able to do that by right. Town council should have been here so that he could walk us through, and we could ask these kinds of questions. This is going on throughout the country, where the affordable housing people want to totally eliminate the concept of single-family residential zones for affordable housing. And that's what this is. In my view, that's what this is. And it's going to have significant impact on every single person who lives in this town. And I think it's premature to say, oh, we like it, but, you don't even know what the buts are. We have no idea of the implications for the town. And I can't believe that we only have 31 days, you know, back in December '24 is when the executive office made this designation, and if they're only giving us 30 days, that's really inappropriate, because we are required to change our zoning bylaws to accommodate this. And the next question would be, well, what if we don't? Can they mandate it? You know, I don't know how you can write a letter in support without saying, we want a postponement, and we need to get in town council to find out what the implications are. I can assure you that at town meeting, if people had known the implications that this was eliminating, R20s and R40s, or whatever, any zoning of single-family residential, that they would be opposed to it, because it's too much authority given to one small group of people. Because once this passes, that's it. We've changed Chatham forever. And I don't know how you could drive a truck through this thing. I can't believe that they actually said legal review isn't required, because it's clearly representative of the intent of the language of the act. It's not clear at all. We have no idea what the implications are. And it's not, again, it's not just tiny houses. Tiny houses are on wheels, apparently. This is, or have to be moved in on there with no foundation. This is any undersized lot in Chatham that's non-conforming because of zoning, previous zoning changes. And there are hundreds of them, probably. And the Affordable Housing Trust could go out under this and buy it, and never have to come back to town for approval. So those are my comments, and I hope you will move slowly on this. I think it's absolutely wrong to only have 30 days to respond to something so serious, and with wide-ranging implications to the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. I think that's Ann Ryan next.
Yes, hi, Ann Ryan here. I think, you know, tiny houses could be a good tool in the toolbox, provided, you know, that they're used appropriately. I am concerned about unintended consequences. I'm concerned about water and sewer, but mostly, I'm concerned about enforcement, and especially with respect to the possible abuse of them as short-term rentals. You know, we have lots of regulations and bylaws that are supposed to protect us from various things, but enforcement is always an issue, because, you know, we have limited personnel to deal with that sort of thing, as it is with the short-term rentals. So I still think that there are a lot of unknown unknowns. It would be nice if we could figure out a way to use this, but right now, I'm a little bit concerned about this. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's Carolyn McClellan, I'm guessing.
Yeah, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Carolyn.
Okay. I'm looking at this a little differently. I think what's being asked of you guys now is not to support it or not support it, it's to make recommendations in the next, by the 30th of this month, I believe is the deadline, whatever the deadline is. And if you look at your packet, I think online, it shows up on page 172 of the packet, or page seven of Gloria's report, she outlines some suggestions that she thinks would be beneficial for Chatham to make. Again, seasonal communities is something the state's already doing. They're asking us to make recommendations before, like what we, how we would like to tweak the seasonal communities. And they may listen to our recommendations, or they may not. But this is what this window is. It's not for us to accept it. We've already accepted the Seasonal Communities Act. So this is to make recommendations. We have, it's the end of the month to do that. You can look at the page to see what some of Gloria's recommendations are. And then, you know, if later, we have, everything has to go through the zoning board, everything has to go through town meeting, any changes we make, and the town will get to decide, they'll get to vet out all the possibilities. And if we don't do it, I guess eventually, we could lose the seasonal communities designation. And if we did that, we'd lost, we would lose the ability to do year-round deed restrictions, and some of the other things that we want to do, so it will be a compromise. But all that, the town meeting will get to decide. It's a long ways off, and if you look at some of the recommendations that Gloria has mentioned on that page seven, one of them in particular is allowing the two months, 24 months, rather than 18 months, for this to go through the town zoning boards, to allow two town meeting cycles for that to happen. And then there's two other recommendations regarding the lot size. So if you guys want to look at that at page seven, and maybe consider that. If you're uncomfortable with it, I would suggest revisiting this at the next time, at your next select board meeting, if you're not comfortable doing it now. But I think that's the mission here. It's not whether or not we're going to accept seasonal communities, we're not making specific decisions about that. They're asking us for recommendations that would be appropriate for our town. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Mr. Phillips.
Brian Phillips, 374 Orleans Road. The by right tiny home did jump out at me, but there's one section, it says, you know, by right or special permit. I don't know if you could keep it to special permit and have it go through the ZBA.
I think that's the tiny home that's mobile. I think that that requires a special permit. I don't think it's, I'm not sure what section you're referring to, or what page.
Page four, with the bullet point section.
Oh.
It's in the blocks.
Of the staff memo.
So I guess that's, I guess these are more questions, is if, you know, can you keep it to special permit for the small lots? My other question is about the year-round, the year-round trust, or year-round housing trust fund? And what, it seems like that gives that group a lot of power. I was just wondering, what checks and balances would the select board have with the year-round housing trust?
Well, is there, is it a year-round trust, or is it just a trust?
Year-round housing trust fund.
I read these.
That's on page, that's on page six of the.
Yeah.
It's just the writing, not in the blocks.
I looked at the regs yesterday. There's a. There's a year-round housing trust fund.
Yep.
They may, we may establish this, it would be by town meeting, and they talk about the board, and they list the powers of the board, which seem to be very similar to the powers that are given to the Affordable Housing Trust under state law. So I guess, just speaking generally, I mean, that type of trust, which would have to be approved by town meeting to be created, would have a similar standing vis-à-vis the select board that the Affordable Housing Trust has, which is, means it would be fairly autonomous.
Right. I missed the "may." I thought it was a required thing.
No, it's not.
Kind of answers my thing. And then, I don't know, does it go over how big the lot has to be for a tiny home in here? Did anyone, did I miss that?
It says.
There would be zoning for lots, you know, undersized.
It says you can put it in, it just says it can be in a single-family residential zoning district, because I read that it doesn't matter whether it's a conforming or an undersized lot.
Okay. And I guess my next question is, can you take a piece of land, subdivide it into tiny lots for your tiny homes? So can you take, like, you know, an acre and cut it into, you know, six lots, six small lots?
I think you'd have to go, I would think, Mr. Meders might find on this, you have to go before the planning board and get the subdivision approved.
I'm using bad math right here, but you guys understand the gist of what I'm.
I understand it, yeah.
The only, the overall was that it was zoning that permits undersized lots. It wasn't, it doesn't say subdivisible lots. This was just permits undersized lot and tiny house development. But, Mr. Chair, I think Carolyn made a very good suggestion. She probably should have made the presentation instead of me, on what we should be doing in process, is just commenting with glorious comments and moving forward.
And not, and not indicate a position favoring.
No, and not indicate a position.
Jeff, did you, you were about to say something?
No, I agree. I think that, I think Carolyn was spot on, spot on. And then in terms of what Brian's question is, it prevents the creation of new undersized lots, that this.
Okay, that was.
Prevents you cannot create new undersized lots to build a bunch of tiny homes. You can't do that.
Okay. All right, that was my question, thanks.
I was looking at the section, when Ms. Gibbs was talking, on residential uses on undersized lots. This is on page six of the regulations.
Yep.
So this is the second category that is allowed of right in your zoning, which you're supposed to adopt. So you can put a residential use on an undersized lot as of right, provided that the residential use is for attainable housing, which we like. The undersized lot shall be located in a single-family residential zoning district. Any single-family residential use shall adhere to any applicable floor-to-area erasure requirements of the community. So that goes to the.
The lot coverage.
The lot coverage. So they're saying what is in effect in our bylaw would govern, and then it says it has to comply with all applicable laws governing wastewater and sewer systems, which is good. What it doesn't say is whether, and I don't know what the answer to this, whether the other applicable, the other provisions of the zoning bylaw, such as setbacks and, you know, 15-foot from the neighbor, or is it from the street, is it 25? Whether that would apply, I'm assuming it doesn't. I'm assuming they're not applicable. That's not clear to me. And then finally, any residential use, this goes to something that Ms. Ryan was asking about. Any residential use on an undersized lot shall comply with any applicable prohibitions, limitations, or other requirements of us related to seasonal homes or short-term rentals. And then it's a proviso that they can't allow, we can't allow a residential housing on an undersized lot as a seasonal home or a short-term rental for less than six months a year. So there's a little bit of, to me, there's a little bit of a lack of clarity as to whether, you know, the other requirements of our bylaw, which people routinely file special permit requests to have waived or varied, would apply here. I'm assuming they don't. or varied, would apply here. I'm assuming they don't. I'm assuming that they're saying the only one that applies is the, the area coverage. But, I mean, I don't know whether, you know, I could certainly entertain the type of letter you're talking about, Shereen, which lists, hey, we've reviewed this, we have a bunch of, we have a list of items that you should either consider revising or clarifying. And if you were going to do that, if we were going to do that, I would, I would, I would personally like to sort of touch on the tiny homes or the residential uses. I just think.
How are we going to make that a complete letter without hearing from town council on his opinions? Well, that's, that's a legitimate question. I don't know what.
This is a comment letter. This is, I've never gone through having town council look at a comment letter for, like, legislation. I think if we were adopting something, that would be a whole different story. But, you know, this is, this is a process. And we had our housing coordinator make the recommendations as to what she saw in here. And if everybody's comfortable with that, I'm comfortable with that being what we send for a letter. And, and then we'll have other opportunity as individuals to attest to what our concerns are, which I will definitely be sending up a letter myself, as, you know, as a community member separately. And, you know, and, and let's just move this forward as, you know.
Carolyn, you wanted to speak a second time? Is that, Carolyn?
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, I'm sorry. I just.
Sure.
I just found the, the part of the packet, I mean, a couple of things that you guys were just talking about were part of Gloria's recommendations, recommending that the regulations add language to either 76.02 definitions, or 76.04 zoning requirements, that undersized lots are the lots that are in existence at the time of the adoption of, of the required bylaw. So that would prevent the creation of new subdivisions, new lots being chopped up. That was one of your concerns. And the other one, allowing municipalities to establish a minimum lot size. So those were the two, two of the things that you're, you're very concerned about. So I think, I think she's done a good job at outlining. And again, you're just making these recommendations, you're kicking this back up to the state, saying, you know, these are some of the things that were, were good for our community. Would you consider them to be added into the bylaw? They're going to do what they're going to do. You're just making a recommendation. You're not accepting it at this point. Technically, we already have. So that's just, I would just go with what Gloria's written here, or put it on the agenda for next week, and hopefully you can have more information. But that's what we're doing here. That's what you're supposed to be doing here, is just making recommendations to the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Elaine, do you want to to speak a second time?
Yes, if you don't mind. This is about undersized lots. I just want to reiterate that according to this, if something was previously an R40 and got changed to an R20, it's a non-conforming lot. That means that R20 parcel would be up for grabs for the entire lot to be affordable housing. They could do all their setbacks and all those kinds of things, but by right, they would be able to make that lot, that's an R20, all affordable housing, in a single-family residential district. And that is a serious concern. And without town council either saying no districts. And, and so I don't know, for us to say, oh, we're fine with this, but we got a question about tiny homes. This isn't about tiny homes. This is about the entire town, single-family districts being impacted anywhere in town, because part of this, this approval is giving the power to the Affordable Housing Trust to buy land. And they could go in and buy a lot, and the entire lot in a residential area could be affordable housing. And, you know, as long as it meets the setbacks, you know, that's, that's it. And I, I don't know how that can be ignored, and how we can send out a letter before this is reviewed by town council and he answers a boatload of questions. I think it's really unfair. I think you should ask for an extension, or they should move their October 31st deadline to something else. This is too serious for communities throughout Massachusetts to deal with in a fire drill situation. It's, it makes absolutely no sense. This is mission creep again. Oh, well, we'll just do this, and we'll deal with it later. That's not, we do that, and then we get ourselves into trouble. We should do it first. And we should not be, they knew this was coming. They should have sent us the regulations earlier. The town, they should have been in the warrant so that we knew what we were buying onto. And, and to get, I'm just going to make one other comment about all these groups that are going to take priority. Again, this is, this is a pattern where we say, okay, well, we're going to say that only artists, fire, fire personnel, whatever, can be there. And every time you restrict the affordable housing, we're putting into a certain group of people, you are eliminating other people who would otherwise need that housing. And so we have to be very careful about doing that. You know, there are, you know, elderly people downsizing, and they're not on that list. You know, they won't be able to apply, because we're saying it's going to be restricted to these particular groups of people in order to get into lottery. And that's just an ancillary thing at this point, but we're doing that a lot. And we're finding out that we're excluding certain non-vocal groups who might need affordable housing by saying, you know, somebody can run one out and paint all day, and, and live in affordable housing. I, I mean, I, when we got the seasonal thing, it was like we got an award. And it's not, it's not really looking like an award right now. It's looking like we're getting tied up into something that we know nothing about, and we have no idea what the implications are.
Okay, thank, thank you, Elaine, Shereen, and then Corey.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a couple of comments today, and then I'm going to make a motion, because it's, you know, we've gone round and round about this. But a couple of things. The Affordable Housing Trust can't go out and just buy up land. We have to do RFP process. People have to want to sell their land to us. That's not, you know, that's not, we're not out there doing that. Will we advocate for affordable and attainable housing? Yes, that's what we do. That's what the Community Housing Partnership does. We have a vital need in this town for year-round housing, and we need to have tools in the toolbox. And this is one way we're doing it. And, I mean, this is a systemic problem all over. And to say that it will exclude people, I have to argue that we have many different things that we're doing to support local year-round, year-round residency. We just, we're just getting started with this. And it always comes down to, you know, when it comes to affordable housing, that we're, we're, you know, we're saying you can't do this. The zoning board of appeals goes ahead, and they, they, they approve usually, you know, big McMansions all over this town. And, you know, and, and, you know, small houses or, or affordable houses, we have a need for this. And we have a need to have a community. You know, living in a, in a retirement gated community is not what I saw Chatham to be, or saw that that's how I wanted to end up, the kind of town I want to end up. I want to see, you know, people working and living in this town, children being raised in this town. And, you know, this, this is something that the Cape is facing, the, the whole country is facing a housing crisis. And this is, again, one aspect of it, one, one tool in toolbox. So I'm going to make a recommendation that we draft a letter to, to the E, do it again for me.
Whoever they are.
Yeah, thank you.
EO HLC.
EO HLC, with the following, with recommendations made by our housing director, or not director, yeah, and that are included in this packet, and by, before, on or before the 31st of October. I mean, if you want to bring it back for review next week, if that's a timely way to do it, then so, I'm happy to do that and have a further discussion.
Well, it's been pointed out to me by the town manager that we have a meeting on the 28th of October, too, so that we have time. I had forgotten about that. So we don't have to do one on the 20th. So that's.
Second.
That's a motion that's been seconded. Mr. Metters, did you want to speak to that motion?
About one of the amendments, or one of the suggestions by Gloria that we, that that motion includes. And I'm second-guessing myself on this. If we have, the references, recommend that 76.12 be changed to allow seasonal communities 24 months for the two, two town meeting cycles. My two-part question is, one, for Katie, if we have a zoning amendment that goes before town meeting, and it fails, can that exact same amendment be brought forth within a one-year term?
Yes, I believe it can, as long as it's the proposal that's made by the planning board. Otherwise, I believe if it were made by any other body, or person, or citizens' group, it would have to go through, I believe, a process of, if I'm not mistaken, a repetitive petition process, to see if it could go back for, within the two-year period. But I believe as long as it's something that is proposed by our planning board, then yes, it can go back within that two-year period.
Okay, so if the planning board doesn't support an article of this sort, mechanically, I'm just saying, throwing it out there, what does that leave us mechanically? And two, it says two town meeting cycles, I'm just putting it out there, do you want two annual town meeting cycles, or do you want special town meeting? That seems to be a bone of contention sometimes with certain mechanics here. Do we want to confine annual town meeting as the mechanics, or are we opening up two special town meetings?
That addressed to Katie.
Addressed to Katie or the board, actually.
From my perspective, I think we would want to see two annual town meeting cycles. Just, I don't think that we would want to be forced into a special town meeting scenario if.
I think that's what the language insinuates.
We read that section on.
Revocation of designation on page seven.
Page seven.
I'm reading the summary that Gloria put.
I'm reading the summary also here.
But I think it insinuates, suggests that it's an annual town meeting. That's what I interpreted it.
I'm looking at the reg.
Because why would you say 24 months? Why would you say 24 months?
Where, what page do you want, Jeff?
Page seven, in her summary comments.
Middle of the page, third bullet point.
Revocation of designation.
Okay, I'll put it this way. Would it be any, any opposition to specify annual town meeting? And this amend her language, just annual town meeting cycles. I mean, that would simplify it for me.
Okay. All right. So there's a motion that Shereen has put forward, seconded by Jeff, to basically send a comment letter. It doesn't endorse the regs, right? It's not asking for an endorsement of the regs. It's just commenting on, on the, the three bullet items that are on page seven of the staff memo. That's, is that the memo? Are you going to add in fishermen and healthcare workers?
I would.
Is that part of your motion?
Yeah.
Okay, and I assume you seconded that?
Yes, absolutely.
Is there anything else that anybody on the board wants to have included? Because, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know what to say about it. I, did you want to say something?
Is this a letter that is drafted and then comes back to us to look at?
Yes, it would come back to us on the 28th, which doesn't give us too much time, but there's.
Because it seems to me those might not be the only points that we may want to add to the letter.
Well, I think we've raised a couple of points that.
Right, but I don't want.
Concerned to me. It's additional points that concerned me, but.
Yeah, and I think it goes beyond the staff comments.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
All right. So we're not endorsing the letter, tell me, it's your motion. We're not endorsing the letter tonight. We're not endorsing the regs. We're asking staff to draft a letter, bring it back to us on the 28th of October, and we'll vote on that night whether to send the letter or not.
Does, and during that time, is that sufficient time for town council to review this and with his comments?
What, what do you want him to review? The regs in general?
Yeah.
Or the letter, or?
Both. The letter's short.
Is that sufficient time? I should think so.
I would think so, yes. We can get it out to him tomorrow, if that's what the board votes.
It's, I mean, I think it's just important, you know, we get excited about this sort of thing, but it's important to, to do our due diligence. And, and, you know, maybe we would all sign on board.
I personally would like to, if we're going to do that, I would like him to clarify whether under, on page six of the actual regulations, this is 76.04, paragraph 1A, sub 2, whether other requirements of the zoning bylaw would be applicable for residential use on an undersized lot beyond the floor rate, or the floor, the coverage ratio. I suspect the answer is going to be no. But they can be waived anyway, because it's not there.
And then they can waive it, exactly.
They waive it now, as you pointed out, and Shereen pointed out.
On time.
All right. Are we satisfied on what we're voting on right now, Shereen?
Comment, I think the, I think the draft letter ought to come back, I'm not going to be here, but the draft letter ought to come back to the board prior to the 28th, so that people can digest it and understand what it's saying. And then, I just think that'd be, well, I'll do a lacrimony.
Hopefully, they, they can do that. I don't know what, I'll just say this, because we're in deliberation. I don't know where I come down on tiny homes. I raised the issue. I'm not sure what to say about it, to be honest with you. Because I'm not sure how many of them we would wind up getting anyway. Nobody's going to put a tiny home on a conforming lot. Carolyn, I know you want, you have, you wanted to speak a third time. We're about to vote on this letter. Is that, you, you still have your hand raised?
Yeah, I just, I'm a little confused as to what you're actually voting on. I guess, you're going to vote on the letter that, that, or the recommendations that Gloria's already put down? Are you going to add?
Yes, 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 yes.
Going to add recommendations to that for the next time, or?
We're, well, we're adding a recommend, just for clarification, we're adding the recommendation that Mr. Dykens made about fishermen and.
Healthcare workers.
And healthcare workers. And that letter is going to come, we're not, and we're not endorsing the letter. We're asking town, the town staff to draft the letter, to try to get it to us before the 28th of October. And also, that town council look at the regulations, proposed regulations in the letter, and offer us any comments he has.
Yeah, offer, right, what we're getting ourselves into.
All right. He's, he's going to read, the town council's going to review your letter for recommendation? Okay.
That's what we're going to ask. I mean, that's not, that's not part of the motion, unless you want to amend the motion, Stuart, to add that in.
I would like to, okay, I'd like to amend the motion, to add, the town council review the regulations for comment.
And the letter, you said.
And the letter.
Seasonal, all right.
Thank you, Carolyn. Is there a second to that amendment to the motion?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, okay. All right. I'm going to end the discussion in deliberation. We'll, we'll take a vote on that motion. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, thank you. Fine, next item is also a request from Member Davis. This is on the leased to locals program for, that's currently in place in three other communities. And Shereen has prepared a memo, and if you'd like to go into it, Shereen?
Sure.
I'm going to ask Mr. Dykens to cheer momentarily. I do have a couple of questions when I get back.
Okay. So the summary, just for the public, was just for the town of Chatham to take a look at Province Town and Orleans leased to local program that they have adopted and put into place. To basically, the purpose of it is to, is, is to provide financial incentives for local property owners to convert short-term rentals, vacant, and vacant units and second homes into stable year-round housing for qualified local households. It would be a year-round, again, a year-round program. Eastham and Orleans adopted it together, and I think Truro and Wellfleet are going forward with a program as well. They've got, either, either they've adopted it, or they're doing the same thing. They're in process as we are. So basically, there's a lot of, a lot of, of things that we can look at. And basically, if staff could, you know, Gloria, I mean, she's, she lives in one of the towns that actually has adopted this program, so she might have a little clearer overview as to how it, how it does, how it works. But there's certain. But there's certain elements that we'd want to look at and what our purpose would be identifying that, what the eligibility requirements would be, who would qualify the tenants in the household, what would be the incentives, what would be the rent caps and affordability controls, compliance, funding, and what the funding and budget would be for something like this. Province Town has done a couple of things where they have an economic annual income cap for the tenants at like $130,000. They have sample grant amounts that they're giving for qualified tenants that include incentives for one year, several years, anywhere from $4,000 for a private room to $8,000 for a three-bedroom. The idea is to just craft something that is similar to what we've seen other towns have success with. There are some overall results, I think, that we could also have presented to us of how it's been working in both Province Town and Orleans, but also what are the lessons, challenges, and the adjustments that the towns have had to make since the programs are running. Also, what the, you know, the advantages and the risks are important, I think, for the community to understand better. One of the things also could be adding in local year-round housing as a tax exemption component if something like that might be feasible as well. So I'm happy to answer some questions. We have, there's partnership programs that are out there that are being launched between towns. I think some of the things we'd have to look at is how the programs are implemented. Province Town and Orleans took a third party that has worked to implement their program called Placemate. I don't know anything about it. I didn't look into what that was. I didn't, I saw Kevin Galligan yesterday from Orleans and I didn't, we went over a little bit of this, but not all of it. So that's my proposal.
Thank you, Shereen. So this program looks to convert short-term rentals into long-term rentals for...
Pretty much, yeah, or second home, or, yeah, or seasonal rentals. So it's an incentive program for property owners that would give them, you know, based on getting grant money or, you know, having a fund set up to be able to pay folks to convert their homes.
Again, I view this as another tool in the toolbox to support year-round housing for local residents and stabilize our workforce. And offer those folks another strong program. Now, your ask, I think the ask tonight as well is similar to what, kind of where we concluded on, on the prior discussion, was to have staff draft a recommendation based on, frankly, leaning on Gloria and her experience in P-Town and her experience with other folks in Eastham, Orleans, and P-Town on how they've crafted their program, what kind of levels of support, what the criteria are, where the funding comes from. There's a whole bunch of unanswered questions, but I think at its conceptual basis, it's a very interesting program to be able to offer to the town.
Yeah, I think one of the things, Jeff, is Orleans voted $500,000 for their program. And I think as far as funding, if somebody's looking at how much the towns have looked at, Province Town did 350 their first year and 630 their second. So there's a lot of questions, you know, that we, I'd like to hear more so that we can ask them and see if this is a program we can, you know, potentially adopt and move forward. I think Community Housing Partnership had been taking a look at leased to locals program, but I sort of jumped the gun to get this moving along as we've been sort of working towards these opportunities that we're seeing come up.
So, Shereen, thank you for bringing this forward and your, thank you for writing the memo up. I just had a question or two. We don't have a long history yet to know how successful they've been, even in Province Town, because that just went in in 2024. Eastham and Orleans are partnering. Is Eastham contributing any funds? Because it doesn't...
I think so. It wasn't spelled out clearly. I think it was the program itself.
And the funds are basically used for two purposes, as I see it. One is to engage the manager, which is this company called Placemate.
Yeah, if we win a third party.
Yeah, a third party. They're using Placemate. And the other would be to provide various incentives. Okay. One of the incentives they're talking about is a tax exemption. There are obviously some exemptions that are in place now. Some of them might require a home rule petition if we were to go to the legislation.
Right. But that's just, again, some other opportunity we can discuss if it is. There are, you know, I also asked staff, if staff would look at some of the lessons learned and the challenges that these, and what adjustments they've made. So it's a, you know, more of a comprehensive layout, bigger picture for us, that we're not, number one, reinventing the wheel, but we can, you know, get a, not get a handle, but start to get a better idea on how to manage expectations and what some of the challenges could be in the way of the incentives and the demand and all sorts of other things.
Okay, have you offered a motion?
I have not.
Okay. Corey, did you want to speak first?
Just for, I'd love to get some, I guess, some more insight on some of these incentives because you break it down, private room, $4,000, studio, $6,000 for one tenant, $12,000 for two tenants. I guess there'd be some kind of relationship potential model between boyfriend-girlfriend, husband-wife, whatever the model ends up being. When you get into like the one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, not every three-bedroom is the same. We have three bedrooms that are, you know, 1,200 square feet and then some three bedrooms that are, you know, 4,000 square feet. So I guess, do they have some kind of, you know, discussion about if you have like a really, you know, a more sizable three-bedroom house that has more amenities, kitchen, decks, whatever? Is there, you know, more of an incentive versus a house that, you know, pre-existing has three bedrooms that is frankly more like a two-bedroom?
I guess that would be based on our occupancy laws, right?
Okay. And just to Corey's question, when you think about those folks that are involved in the short-term rental program now with those types of bedrooms, to get them to do a leased to locals, maybe have to sweeten the pot a little bit because they're going to make, it's not a slam dunk that a lot of people are going to convert their short-term rentals into long-term housing, because incentives have to be pretty large for them to do it. But it's, again, potentially another tool in the toolbox.
Yeah. And we don't know what happens after the first year, whether they would renew or not. That's something, we don't have a...
Again, these are some of the questions about, you know...
You're basically asking, well, you haven't made the motion yet. I'll just throw it open to a public comment unless there's any more from the board and then you can...
I'll make a motion.
I'm not seeing any public comment. Mr. Phillips?
Brian Phillips, you guys, for the year-on tax exemptions, you guys already rolled out for long-term rentals, right, for a tax exemption, the way I understood it?
Could you repeat that?
No.
Not sure what...
It wasn't?
What did you ask?
When you guys were doing the year-on tax exemptions, a lot of them for, you know, military...
Oh, yeah, that discussion we had recently.
Military ones, and then there was the, you know, just residents, wasn't one of those for long-term rentals?
I don't recall. We haven't gotten that back yet from staff.
I don't think so, because an issue came up with a resident taxpayer, a taxpayer landlord had approached me and said that we should have included year-round rental housing as a tax exemption because now he sees a shift in the cost for his, you know, his rental. Therefore, he feels that he might have to adjust the rental, per-month rental.
Okay.
You know, because of that. And I said, well, that, wait, stand by and wait because we're talking about leased to locals.
We did not.
Okay, because the tax adjuster said you might have or that you did, because one in Harwich did it or Orleans or something, and they said, I think you guys might have put in, I don't know. I thought you did, but...
I have to go back and look at the minutes.
We did not.
Okay, so...
Now that we did not, but I, you know, I don't recall everything that was said at that meeting. And we're expecting a memo back from the staff that lays out with some specificity recommendations for ones that we ask them to come back to us on.
Okay, so we'll see.
We don't think it's there, though.
All right. So I guess in essence, doesn't, wouldn't that do, you know, a similar thing? And I guess the only other, the fact that the people that already rent, you know, wouldn't get anything for this, the people already, you know, already do year-round rentals.
I imagine we could do an application program kind of thing. I, I don't know. These are things we can discuss, Brian, when we get a recommendation that comes back from the staff. You know, we'll have a ton of, we'll all have a lot of questions.
Okay.
And so I would hope that you'd bring that question back if it doesn't come up in the proposal.
All right. Thanks.
Stuart?
I think this is an interesting, another tool in the toolbox, as you suggest, the be an adult nut of blood relation to the property owner. You know what that exactly...
Again, these are other people's regulations. I'm not sure.
I didn't know.
We can probably ask when, if it comes up in our proposal.
Fair enough.
But it is, yeah, it was a question.
Yeah, I read this in the newspaper last summer as well, and there's other communities doing it. I think it's an interesting, I'll be interested to see what they, just folks bring back.
I heard it discussed on the radio. Shereen, did you...
Yes.
I don't see any more public comments, so Shereen, did you want to offer a motion?
I move that the select board direct staff to explore, discuss, and recommend whether Chatham should adopt a leased to locals program similar to those recently launched in Province Town and Orleans and Eastham. Such a program, well, I don't need to read that part, but would include an overall overview purpose, eligibility requirements, qualifying tenants, incentives, grants, rent caps, affordability controls, monitoring and compliance, funding, and funding and budget.
Essentially, you're asking staff, I'm looking at your written memo, to develop a detailed leased to locals program design for us to consider?
Right.
And to explore revenue sources?
Right, exactly.
Second?
All right. We got that, Kathy? All right. Call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Okay. Last item on the agenda is something that was, is left over from, I think, last time we met. This is to consider the approval of affirming, approval of or affirming slash affirming the town manager's engagement of special parenthesis labor council per the Chatham Home Rule Charter, section 4-7M. This was continued. So when we discussed this, and this was originally put on the agenda by Member Smith, there's a provision in the charter that says that the town manager, this has to do with her duties, is responsible for negotiation of all contracts with town employees over wages and other terms and conditions of employment. And then it says except employees. I think that's just a legacy from the school district, from when we had a school, our own school system. The town manager may, subject to the approval of the select board, employ special counsel to assist in the performance of these duties. So the town manager is supposed to come before the select board if she wants to employ labor, the council, I'm calling it labor council, they're using the word special council, but that's what it is. This is the council that assists the town manager in the negotiation of contracts. Contracts themselves with the unions come before us for approval, but that's not what's on the table here. So Stuart had asked to see the underlying engagement letter between the firm we have been using for some time, Clifford &amp; Kenny. And it was reported back, there's no formal engagement letter, per se, but there is a letter that lays out the fee arrangements, and that's before us. So we're being asked to, since we hadn't had this provision of the charter technically followed historically, at least not during my time on the board. We've approved regular town council, but I don't think we have been asked to approve labor council. So that's before us, and I think this really just calls for a simple vote to approve and affirm the town manager's engagement of Clifford &amp; Kenny as a special counsel per that charter provision. Yes, Stuart?
So I have a couple of questions. When, before my tenure here, you folks went through an RFP process for hiring a special, not special, but general counsel, Mr. Tallerman. And then that came up most recently because his contract had expired. We got through that. That seems to be ironed out. And I remember when we went through the waterways regulations, we went through an RFP process to hire a special counsel at that as well. We've now had this firm for, looks like somewhere around 13 years, and it doesn't look like, or I haven't seen, an RFP process for this group. And I think, I think to have a competitive, we may end up with this group, but to have a competitive program similar to an RFP would be, would be helpful, like we've done the previous councils.
Let me ask Jill. I know when I was city solicitor in Quincy, I could hire special counsel for anything, and I didn't have to put it, albeit this was a long time ago. I wasn't required to RFP anything. I could just...
Yeah, I don't think it's a requirement. I'm just saying your history, what you folks did.
No, it's exempt from the procurement statute. So airport special counsel, I don't believe that there was an RFP for that. So in this case...
Are we required to have an RFP for regular town council? I didn't think so.
No, no, it's up to the board.
So, and you acknowledge that, Stuart, that it's not...
Yeah, it's not required. That's clear.
I guess what I would say in response to that, to your suggestion, I know I've been on the board, I'm in my 11th year, I've, we've had, in that time, I've had limited, some limited interaction with Mr. Clifford. It's mostly been Jamie Kenny. I think she's been, done an excellent job for us. And the hourly rates are $2.50 an hour. God, you can't get that anywhere. And there's a monthly flat fee that allows for unlimited access by phone and email. So I personally don't see the need for doing it. I don't see the advantage of doing it at this time, but I'll open it up for other comment from the board. Those are my thoughts. Corey?
I'll keep my comments relatively simple. I very much appreciate Stuart's analysis and review and, you know, bringing up a conversation. But for me, I make it very simple. I don't have a reason to want to change this council. I don't, there's nothing that I've seen in the 10-plus years I've been here that concerned me. I think our council has been of higher standards. It's, they've done a good job. They've, you know, we haven't been, a lot of interaction, but the interaction we have had has always been, I think, very professional. So there's nothing that is inclining me to, to change counsel or look for other counsel at the moment. So I'm really fine with status quo, to be honest with you.
Any comments from anybody else on the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I move to approve the town manager's engagement of Clifford &amp; Kenny LP as special labor counsel for the town of Chatham.
Second.
Okay. Did you want to expand the word approve to include also ratify or whatever it says at first?
It says approve.
Approve, okay, okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there, are there any discussion on that motion? Okay, I'll call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
No.
And the chair votes aye. So it's four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll accept a last motion of the evening.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We are adjourned at 8:08 PM. Good night.